Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The August 20, 2008 meeting of the City Council was called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. I make this announcement at every meeting. There's no reason for any cause for alarm, but basically, the building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system, so should alarms activate, please leave by the exit, go outside, our marshals will be there, they'll tell you when it's safe to re-enter the building. We do this as a matter of course, there's no reason to believe that anything like that would ever take place. So before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Ed Love Lady, Rector, All Saints Episcopal Church, and please remain standing for the pledge. Let us pray. Almighty God, we know you to be a God of grace and mercy, bestowing the members of this council the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may do the work of this council, seeking to make our city a place where all people find peace and justice. Bless all who come before this council today with your grace of patience and truth. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic with which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Lois.
Good morning.
Good morning, my white companion. How are you? Hey, when are you, are you staying for Saturday? You coming back with me too? Morning. Morning, everybody. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda. I think we probably like this the best part of everything we're going to be doing today because we celebrate folks who make our city a very special, great place in which to live. And the first ceremonial item is the recognition of our August Employee of the Month, and I'd like to ask Scott Adams, Director of the Office of Business Development, to join us at the podium, and I'm proud to announce that the August Employee of the Month is Julie Quezenberry. Julie, would you please come forward? Congratulations, Julie. Julie's employed as a real estate specialist with the Office of Business Development and has been with the city since October 2004. She's been a tremendous asset to the city and has played a big role in our continuing success to attract and retain new businesses. She was instrumental in the city's lure to bring a grocery store, finally, to West Las Vegas. She drafted... She drafted... Is it open yet? No, it's going to be open, though, I'll tell you that. She drafted a very creative incentive package which ultimately led to the agreement between the city and Bylow Market, which will open in September. I just want to say this as an aside, Councilman Barlow held a job fair, was it last Saturday or Friday?
It was past Saturday.
It was past Saturday, over at what we call the old Vons', which will be the new Bylow. And it was remarkable what I saw there when I stopped by for five minutes or so. First of all, the city staff was there assisting him and making folks from the entire community feel very, very welcome as they applied for jobs. And there was nothing go as smoothly as that process went. Folks filled out applications, they were interviewed, they had drug testing, and at the end of the day, I think 100 people, 100 people were employed. And that's something very, very special, and just to see the interest in what's taking place over there made my heart feel good, I'll put it that way, and I was very proud of the city for making this deal and proud of Councilman Barlow for putting this job fair together. So thank you very much. Julie has helped create a new retail program for the downtown using her 15 years of commercial brokerage experience and plenty of research. She also nominated and appointed by the International Council of Shopping Centers to be the Nevada State Alliance Western Division Co-Chair, and this position will help Julie broaden the opportunities for retail development throughout the city. And all these activities have led to increased business in our city, making it even a better place to live, work, and play. So on behalf of the entire City Council, Julie, we'd like to congratulate you on being named the August 2008 Employee of the Month, and along with this plaque, this is my favorite part, you're going to receive a $100 Visa gift card and you're going to take me out for drinks. No, it didn't, wait, it didn't say that. I did not say that. A $100 Visa gift card, compliments of the Nevada Federal Credit Union, and a one-year membership to the 24 Hour Fitness, courtesy of 24 Hour Fitness and the Malaski Group. Congratulations.
Thank you. This is a truly deserved award. Julie came on board just a little under four years ago. We brought her in from the private sector, and she's taking very much a private sector approach to everything she does. She doesn't take no for an answer. And she has, shortly after she came on board, we gave her a real estate unit. We acquired the real estate function within the redevelopment agency. She is responsible for managing over 100 properties with an asset value of about $500 million, and with three people. And it's a well-oiled machine, and we're very excited about the work she does in that regard. She's also been very instrumental in attracting a number of the major businesses that have come into the downtown area. I've repeatedly said there's about 15 new entertainment retail businesses within a radius of Las Vegas Boulevard and Fremont Street, and a great number of those are due in a large part to her efforts. So we're excited to have her on staff. She's truly one of our outstanding performers, and I couldn't think of anybody more deserving.
Thank you very much. It's an honor, and I'd like to thank the well-oiled machine. If Diane Rodriguez and Joanne Crowley could stand up. This is the OBD Real Estate Team. We have a little girl power going on here. Steve Van Gorp, if he could stand up. I'd like to thank him. Scott Adams, and Romeo Betty in the Office of Business Development, as well as all my OBD coworkers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. For our next item, I'd like to ask our friend Lance Moran with the Senior Citizens Advisory Board to please join us at the podium, and Lance is going to introduce us to the senior of the quarter. Did you get your marching orders, Lance?
I did.
Okay, they said, "Make it short."
I will. I will. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before I introduce our senior of the quarter nominee, I'd just like to ask those of you in the audience, if you would like to nominate a senior for senior of the quarter who lives in the city of Las Vegas, boundaries for his or her community involvement and volunteerism, please contact the city's Neighborhood Services Department to obtain a nomination form. It's really short, really easy to fill out. And good morning. It's our pleasure to honor a person who contributes her time to improving the lives of Las Vegas residents, especially seniors. Edna McCoy, come on down and join us. Edna was nominated by Hattie Soul, the Director of Jude 22, for the superb job she does as a driver for Jude 22 Senior Nutrition Center. For the 12 hours a week, she volunteers delivering food items to seniors who are unable to drive to the center to pick up the items, and for the time, she volunteers to show young mothers and seniors how to cook nutritious meals on a budget. Homebound seniors have more difficulty staying healthy, but with Edna's help, they are encouraged to modify their eating habits and to learn how to stay more active. Edna is generous with her knowledge and her time. Every year in December, she prepares all the food for the annual Christmas luncheon provided for Jude 22's senior clients. About 250 to 300 seniors attend each year. Edna is able to transform the food donated by various vendors into a fabulous feast, thoroughly enjoyed by all. We thank Edna for her contributions to the community. Edna, thank you very much.
I just want to thank everyone, and I want to thank the senior, Las Vegas Senior Advisory Board, I want to thank the mayor, and of course Jude 22 for letting me be able to volunteer each month. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, and this is for you.
Thank you.
Very nice. And Lance, thank you very much. Did a great job. Thank you. Okay, for our next two items, Councilman Wilson's going to recognize some school crossing guards for their outstanding service to the community and a nationally-ranked local baseball team. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Please excuse me, folks, I'm battling a little chest cold, so my voice is even lower than normal. Okay, it is my pleasure today to honor some very special people today. They are really the unsung heroes in our community, but before I do that, if we could queue up a public service announcement, which is playing right now.
I'm Sheriff Doug Gillespie, and I'm asking for your help keeping the children of Clark County safe. Thousands of students cross busy intersections every day, and without a crossing guard to help stop traffic, it's very dangerous.
I'm Commissioner Susan Breyer. Becoming a crossing guard doesn't take much time, only an hour a day, but it's a dedication many senior citizens enjoy, including my father.
I'm Councilman Steve Wilson, and I want to remind all drivers to slow down in school zones and be cautious of our kids.
Thank you. That's a public service announcement that started running a few days ago because we're just about to start the start of a new school year, and we always need new crossing guards, but today, we're going to recognize some of our current crossing guards. We're always promoting the need for more crossing guards, and I think it's important for us to recognize and thank those who have dedicated their time and energy to getting our kids to school safely each day. As a member of the Crossing Guard Task Force, I've had an opportunity to see firsthand what wonderful and dedicated people we have working as our crossing guards. Today, we are here to thank those who have been crossing guards for more than 10 years in the beginning, and then there's a couple who have been crossing guards for more than 15 years. Will the following people please stand as I call your name, and after I get you all up, we're going to have a big round of applause, and we've got some special certificates for you. So, these following people have been crossing guards for more than 10 years. Gertie Owens, please stand. Gertie, where are you?
Yay!
Way over there. Come on down here. Come on down here, please. Donnell Taylor, please stand. Bessie Weed, Bessie? Hold your applause, we're going to do a big one at the end. I know, Councilman Ross, you always want to applause for everything. Joyce Morris, is Joyce here? Thank you, Joyce. Floyd Murray, Floyd, thank you very much. Joyce Wright, please stand, is Joyce here? Here we go. Thank you, Joyce. Elmyra North, Elmyra, are you here? Where is she? Oh, there you are, okay, Elmyra. Janice Di Amico, thank you, Janice. Edward Belukas, thank you, Edward. Alejandro Velez, are you here, sir? Thank you very much. And Louis Grant, Louis, please stand. Thank you. These folks have been crossing guards here in the city of Las Vegas for more than 10 years. Let's have a round of applause. Why don't you come up? Why don't you folks come up? We've got a certificate here for you, right here, Councilman Mayor Protem Reese, if you'd like to hand those out? Thanks so much, folks.
Good evening. How are you doing? How are you?
Good seeing you. All right. Thank you so much. How are you doing?
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming down today. Thanks for all you do.
Thanks for making us say, "How you doing?" I'm so good.
Thank you so much, my dear. Thank you so much.
How are you there? Thank you for your show. Thanks so much. Good having you here. Good having you here.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, while we're finishing up giving these fine folks their certificates, just imagine, crossing guards for 10 years. Now, we've got a couple of people we'd like to honor who have been crossing guards for 15 years. Two people, please stand up and come on down after I call your name. Christopher Stark and Norbert, I'm going to chop this up, Zawazlak. Are you Norbert? Mr. Stark and Mr. Zawazlak, come on up. These gentlemen have been crossing guards here in the valley for more than 15 years. Congratulations, and thank you so much, sir. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, we've got one thing left, and that's to honor a very special person. When we talk about crossing guards, one name comes to mind. Helen Lohan. Helen, would you please come up here and join me? Helen grew up in the San Francisco Bay area where she was a model for almost 10 years. She has a very big heart and has always been very generous to her family, coworkers, and friends. She loves the crossing guards and all the children. Their safety is of the utmost concern to her. Helen is a very passionate person and always stands up for what she truly believes in. She fights for her people, and I know that because we're on the Crossing Guard Task Force together, and she's always there promoting what's best for you folks, the crossing guards. Helen has worked with Metro since January 27, 1975, Mayor. That's, I was barely born then, you're right, but that's a, that's a long time. Always younger than you, Mayor, I'll always be younger than you. Helen was appointed Crossing Guard Supervisor by former Sheriff Jerry Keller. Helen's number-one love is her seven-year-old granddaughter Addison. Is Addison in the audience? She's in school, okay. Helen's daughter Stephanie and son Michael are always supportive of her, and I think Stephanie's in the audience, right? And they are here to help recognize Helen's great contributions to the community. Helen, I'd like you to say a few words and just tell us how special it is to be a crossing guard, and of course, we want to thank you for all you've done for this community. One more round of applause for Helen, please.
My privilege. Thank you very much. I have been, had the privilege here for 15, a little over 15 years now, with the Crossing Guard Program, and I can't tell you how much I admire these people. They deserve nothing but your best. We came into this program, basically, with 59 people, and now we're grown to 431 guards out there on the street to help protect these children going to and from school, and they certainly deserve our appreciation, warmth, and understanding. They're out there in the cold, in the heat.
They're both the cold guys.
And they agree. And they do a remarkable job considering what our traffic situation is out there in the street. I can't thank them enough for staying with me this long, but they're doing it not for me, but for your children, and thank God for them.
Helen, let's give a plug to Crossing Guard recruitment right now. If somebody's interested in becoming a crossing guard, what can they do?
Absolutely. We want them to give us a call, they can go online, they can call us at 828-3446, and we'll be glad to explain our program, and send them an application. We need guards all over the city and county, so if you have one hour a day, we've got a place for you, and we try and place them as close to their home as possible. Thank you.
Okay, Helen, to recognize your efforts, we have this beautiful, I don't know, what do you call this, a monument?
Beautiful plaque.
Beautiful plaque, award? Thank you, Councilwoman. And I've gotten my fingerprints all over it, so if you'd like to pick it up and take it, we're very happy to give that to you, and thank you for all you do, Helen. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. See you at the next task force. Okay. It's my pleasure to have a little fun now. Not that we didn't have some fun just now. It's my pleasure to recognize a very special group of young boys, the Las Vegas Baseball Academy's Lightning Baseball Club. The Las Vegas Baseball Academy Lightning Baseball Club is comprised, excuse me, of 12 Las Vegas youth, all 10 years of age. The head of the Las Vegas Baseball Academy, Mike Martin, who's here in the audience, is a former catcher for the Chicago Cubs. He established the academy back in 1983. The coach, Jeff Baker, is a former minor-league player and standout at the University of Texas Longhorns. Both of these men are great role models, teaching discipline, sportsmanship, and service to the community. In June, the Lightning competed in a tournament at the Cooperstown Dreams Park in Cooperstown, New York. This is the first time a 10-and-under team from Nevada participated in Cooperstown. The Lightning was the only team to represent the state of Nevada in this tournament, and I wanted to make sure we brought them here today to recognize their accomplishment. These young men worked hard for over nine months preparing for this tournament and raising money to attend, all the while staying active in school and getting good grades, and I understand that all of them are honor roll students. The night of the final tournament, there was extremely thick fog on the fields, and the games were delayed several times. I thought we had some photos of, okay, let's see. If it's foggy, how can we see, but I guess...
They'll cycle through.
They'll cycle through, okay, let's watch some photos here. Apparently, on the night before the tournament, the players had to wait for the weather to clear before they could play. They were told after midnight that they would have to come back at 7:00 AM to play their last game. There it is. They didn't get to sleep until 2:15 AM. I understand they slept in their uniforms and returned for the 7:00 AM game. I call that dedication. Out of 97 teams from all over the country, the Lightning team placed third overall out At the conclusion of the week-long tournament, each player was inducted into the American Youth Baseball Hall of Fame and was presented with a Hall of Fame ring. I'm told there were many comments about the excellent behavior, sportsmanship, and skills displayed by these young men. They represented Las Vegas well. Before I have them come up, I have a funny note that I'm asked to share about this team. Apparently, you know where I'm going, huh? Apparently, at the last practice before they left for New York, the boys all shaved their heads for the tournament. Is that right? It gets better. They had made a deal with Coach Baker that if they shaved their heads, he would too. Did he? He's smiling over there, he must have. And then finally, Coach Martin agreed that he would shave his mustache, which he had for nearly 29 years. So after the last practice, the Clippers came out, the bald heads got a lot of attention, and during closing ceremonies at Cooperstown, in front of thousands of fans, the baseball commissioner made note of how cool it was that the boys shaved their heads and were ready for some serious summertime baseball. Okay, without further ado, what I'm going to ask is to recognize the boys, and as I call your name, please come up. Nicholas Quintana, please come up. I understand that Nicholas is, both his mother and father work for the city of Las Vegas. Nolan Erickson, Chris... Sure. Well, but before you do that. Nolan, are you up? Okay, great. Chris Fredrickson, come on up, please. Nico De Colati, come on up, Nico. And I understand your nickname is Chungo?
No.
What is it? Okay. Matt Mitchell, AKA Matty Mooch. Daniel Edson, Daniel, come up, please. Danny Heller, AKA The Beast. And then we've got a couple of brothers, Talon Thomason and Tucker Thomason, come on up, please. And I understand your dad's with Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, and that your grandfather recently retired from LVFR. Dylan Orlando, please come up. Jack Little. Okay, I got all the boys, right? Okay. And would coaches Mike Martin and Jeff Baker come up, please? Let's have a round of applause for them. Now, normally, we give out certificates, you know, the pieces of paper which we give out all the time, but we thought it would be a little bit more special this time, because if, you know, if I'm 10 years old, I don't want a certificate. What do you want a certificate for? I want a baseball! So what we've got for all the boys are personally autographed baseballs with all the council members' signatures, which really doesn't mean much, but Mayor Oscar Goodman's personal signature is on each baseball. They're worth a fortune!
Yeah. What about eBay?
Okay. What about eBay? Am I going to have Coach Baker or Coach Martin? Would you like to say a few words, please?
How are you?
How are you? Good seeing you.
First, this is a great honor, especially for a 10-year-old. I call them young men, I don't call them young boys, these are young men. They were young boys, now they're young men. But this is a great honor for them to come out here and be before the City Council. In fact, I know school hasn't started yet, but I gave them an assignment today. They have to go home and do a little research on what the City Council is, and they have to write me a two paragraph, what it means to them. So guys, good luck with that, and that's due before school next Monday, okay? But no, this was a lot of fun. This is a group of young men who we had together for about nine months. These are young men that, with the discipline that we expect in our organization, and where they were, and where they brought their level of baseball to, it was just an extremely fulfilling thing for me to see, along with the support of the parents and the coaches and everybody. It was just a great opportunity, and I know that this opportunity will be lasting memories for a lifetime. So I just want to thank the City Council for this opportunity, and hopefully, we can come back next time and tell you that we were number one.
Thanks, Coach. Boys, why don't you...
Yeah, but I can't figure out how to put it on.
One of the guys will help you.
All right, guys, thanks so much. Why don't you take this basket right here and distribute the balls to all of you, and thanks for coming down today.
Oscar, did you want to take your with you? Absolutely, but I'm trying to figure out how to put the pin on it. That's good. It's a very nice pin. Can I draw on two cents for the pictures? No, I haven't yet.
I have a year for you.
Okay. Thanks, Russ. Thank you very much. I love a picture with these guys. Come on, guys, gather around. Coach, come on.
Mike Martin and I have known each other since 1982. We met, don't leave yet, Coach, the good stuff's coming. Michael played professionally with the Chicago Cubs, and I met him on the minor-league trail. We met in 1982, and I think it was Amarillo, Texas, or some city there. Played together here in 1983 with the Las Vegas Stars, and our families have been close ever since. His daughter Kylie is my godchild. And Mike, stand up just for a sec. Mike and I have gone to weddings, to baptisms, to charity events... Mike and I have gone to weddings, to baptisms, to charity events. This is the most dressed up I've ever seen him in 25 years. But, Councilman, I do want to... On a serious note, folks, and some of you that either have kids or grandkids are involved in sports at the high school level, junior high level, club teams. There's so many now, and there's so much pressure for these kids to play one sport or two sports as soon as they're out of their diapers. But I'll tell you one thing about Mike Martin. Joseph Michael Martin, he is a person that not only can teach the kids baseball skills, that's easy for him, but what he teaches these kids as far as life skills and discipline and student achievement, very few people, not only in Las Vegas but across the country, can balance that coaching sport and coaching people. And I'll tell you, he's a great friend, he's a brother to me, but he is a jewel in our community. For 25 years, has been doing this as a passion. Doesn't make a lot of money at it, believe me. Doesn't make a lot of money at it, but one of the few people that I've come across that actually are in it for the kids. And parents, I'm sure you saw it in Mike, what he's done for the kids. Congratulations, but, Your Honor, he's special.
And Coach Martin, Councilman Brown took a cheap shot at you with the clothes, right? Just remember, he's the only guy in the world who has a baseball card with his picture on the front, and there's nothing on the back of the card. Okay. For our next item... Councilman Barlow is going to recognize the 9th and 10th Cavalry, which are known as the Buffalo Soldiers.
Councilman Brown, I would love to see that baseball card. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you today to acknowledge a great organization, the Buffalo Soldiers. And I would just like to have them stand and come forward, please, as I call them up. Their vice president, Mr. Paul Meacham, would you come forward, please, along with Mitchell Sales, Fred Monterio, Ann Monterio, Thomas Lay, Don Scott, Tyree Mason, and Floyd Brown? And as they come forward, I would just like to share some history with you all as it relates to the Buffalo Soldiers. The Buffalo Soldiers are celebrating their 142nd anniversary this year. Good morning. In 18... Go ahead, yes. 142 years. In 1866, Congress established an act that allowed the enlistment of black men in the Army. This was the first time that black soldiers were allowed to serve in the peacetime Army. Prior to the 1866 Act of Congress, after the war, black soldiers were returned to slavery. The black soldiers fought in every war in the United States thereafter. The Buffalo Soldiers fought under adverse conditions. They were not given equal equipment and tools suitable for combat. The black soldiers were dedicated and had the lowest desertion of any brigade in the Army. The Buffalo Soldiers had four West Point graduates. The first graduate was named Henry O. Flipper. The 9th and 10th Horse Cavalry Association Greater Las Vegas Area Chapter, which stands before you today, was granted a charter in 2005. The purpose of this organization is to keep the history of the Buffalo Soldiers alive. It is our honor to recognize this organization for their strength, integrity, endurance, and their continued efforts to educate high school youth, which I believe... Where's Mr. Sales? Mr. Sales? No. I got the wrong name. Where's the young man at? Okay, he's standing in front of me. I can't... I didn't recognize him. Okay. As you all can see, standing before me, they really give back to the youth here in the community, as well as fraternities and various other groups on their remarkable history. And so today, I would like to take this time to publicly congratulate your organization for 142 years of service. And at this time, I would like for Mr. Paul Meacham to please come forward and receive or say a few words as we recognize you and proclaim this day the Buffalo Soldier Day in the city of Las Vegas for your 142nd year anniversary. Thank you so very much. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow, and to the mayor and other council persons. We would just like to say how appreciative we are to receive this honor. This chapter is a very proud chapter, and we are proud to be able to carry on the heritage that was really started by these ex-slaves since 1866. That's when they started, by the Act of Congress. The 9th and 10th Cavalry was a very elite group. They helped to settle the West at a time when they really needed it. We are proud of the Las Vegas chapter. Our chapter consists of a lot of success stories in this city. Our chapter counts among its membership a brigadier general, a colonel, a bus company owner, a restaurant owner, a former college president, a former assistant dean of the engineering school at the University of Michigan, and numbers of other people who just love to contribute to the community and ride horses. We have a good time doing that. Now, at this time, I really would like to introduce again to you the members who are here to represent the chapter of the Buffalo Soldiers. We have brigadier general, Don Scott. Would you raise your hand? We have Lieutenant Colonel, Thomas Lay. We have Trooper Fred Montero. Trooper Ann Montero. Trooper Mitchell Sales. And we also have our youngest Buffalo Soldier, Trooper Tyree Mason. Tyree rides and participates 100% with everything we do. He's one of our... He's one of our most accomplished riders, really, and so we appreciate having him around. He keeps us honest and honorable at all of the meetings. And the last person that I'll say for last is someone who's very special to us and should be special to this country. He's the oldest Buffalo Soldier. I'll just introduce you to the youngest. He's the oldest Buffalo Soldier in the chapter. He is Trooper Floyd Brown. Trooper Brown is an original Buffalo Soldier. He joined the 10th Cavalry in 1936. He is now 91 years old, and he's still very active. We are quite proud of this chapter and the things that we've done in this city, and we can hope to continue. And again, City Councilman, we really do appreciate the honor that you've bestowed upon us. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And before you leave, I want to make sure that you have this. On behalf of the mayor and city council, we would like to proclaim this day the Buffalo Soldier Day here in the city of Las Vegas. All right. Thank you so very much. Now, Councilman Ross, I know that you asked me yesterday if, in fact, I was going to ride a horse in the Helder Rattle. I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to invite the Buffalo Soldiers to participate also in the Helder Rattle, because that would be a great opportunity to really celebrate the entire city during Helder Rattle. So I look forward to riding a horse. Thank you.
We have a horse for you. We reserve one. Really, we have one for you.
My favorite horse is the horse with the head and the stick on the back. Thank you.
Very good. All right, for our final item, Councilwoman Tarkanian is going to recognize some local youth for their outstanding participation in a recent community project. Councilwoman.
My goodness, I got some applause just to step up here. That's pretty good. I want to state first that Rancho Springs is an exceptional homeowners association. It's caught in a corner between the 95 freeway and Rancho Drive. It was disassembled by expansion of the freeway. Deterioration occurred all over the place. It included houses, well, some drug houses, trees being knocked down, lights being taken away, making it less safe in the neighborhood, trash, vagrants coming through the fence by the freeway, which was never properly closed, and I hope eventually it is properly closed by M.D. But in any case, a bad situation for a neighborhood, which was very family-oriented. Well, they formed their group just a short time ago. They've been working the last two, three years on making improvements within the area. They first started out working with Metro, and they were able to take care of most of that drug house situation. They've been repairing, repainting. They obtained a monument stone, which sort of brought tears to their eyes, placed on the corner of Rancho and Mesquite, because it showed the pride of ownership, the pride of community that they had. Well, we know that youngsters learn by example, and the youngsters in that neighborhood were watching what their families were doing. And John Godman saw the contribution his parents and his grandfather Chuck made, and he decided he wanted to emulate their efforts. So he got together some of the other youngsters in the community, and they applied and obtained a grant the Youth Neighborhood Association Partnership Program gives. They give several each year. They applied for one of them, and they obtained it. And I would like to let you see a little bit of what they did, because they saw that the walls were being painted, they saw that trash was being collected, and they thought... They saw all the things... On the way to Summerlin, I believe it was. They saw all these beautiful paintings of the Southwest, and so they decided that they wanted to help and put some at the end of their cul-de-sacs. And here you see them painting... They designed each one of the... You know something you guys have part of the tape? And there they are on the ladders, painting at the end of each one of those cul-de-sacs. And of course, that's the freeway sound wall that they're painting it on. So they all got together a rather warm summer morning, and if you look at this now as you go down Mesquite, if you look to the right into their neighborhood, you see these bright southwestern designs that they have drawn and they have painted at the end of those. A great beautification within the area. No, this is not graffiti. This was art. This was art. It was drawn by artists, young artists, and painted by the young artists. And so what I'd like to do today, and the council would like to do, is show our appreciation by giving certificates of appreciation to the youngsters that participated in this group. And I can't say strongly enough, this is what it's all about. It's about we working in the community to make improvements needed, and we being the models for our youngsters to follow. And so with great pride, I'd like to... If the mayor pro tem would help me with these certificates of appreciation. I know many of the youngsters might be in school, because there are some schools which have already started, but would like to say your name, and if you're here, if you would come up, please, and obtain your certificate. So Jessica Lopez. Is Jessica here? Probably the entire family was not able to come. Yeah, there are three. Marco Lopez and also David Lopez. They were all out there. I don't know if you noticed, there were some young children and some older working together on one of the ladders, and that was the Lopez family. Althena Lucas. And our leader, Josh. Let's see here. And his brother Chuck. Oh, I'm sorry. I know it's not his... Oh, my gosh. Adrian Boulton, yes. Chuck, I think I deserve something for making you so young again, huh? And Adrian Boulton, if they're there, she's here. Well, Chuck has been the driving force behind that. His family has emulated, other youngsters have come in, and I just want to say these certificates of appreciation are very meaningful from those of us in the city council to you. And thank you very much.
Yes, I'd like to say something. Yeah. Well, thank you. I take you back. I'd just like to thank the city council for their support in this project for Rancho Bel Air, our neighborhood neighbor. They helped to do neighborhood services. Alma and Kelly, I'd like them to stand up for all their support in my project. Lois is lazy on Robin. She was... For her support in the project. And of course, the project was a huge success, and of course, I'm very proud of the kids. Four of them didn't make it today, didn't get out of bed, and I'm surprised about that. I don't know if they didn't get out of bed, they didn't answer the door. But we started like at 7:00 in the morning, and so I was surprised they weren't up yet if they didn't come today. I don't know what the reason was. But I'm really, very proud of the kids that worked on the project. I know they're very proud of their work they did. It's something that, you know, they gave to the neighborhood, and they can be very proud of. I know every day they get up and look at their wall that they painted, they have some... You know, they can say, "Look, this is something we did." And I talked, and I know... I've talked to several of the neighbors in the neighborhood, and they love the paintings on the wall. In fact, there was a few of them that said they want us to do some more paintings on the wall. We'll see. But like I say, I'm very proud of the kids, and thank you for this city for the youth grant. Thank you.
Let's have a picture taken. Well, that's... Yeah, that's all. Just get a picture.
Thanks.
Come on, Mr. Ross.
Great job. Okay. Thank you very much. We have... We're having a philosophical discussion with members of the council as to how we should thank those employees who have served the city so well, who are now entering into that period of time in their life that they're retiring from service on behalf of the city for the community. And the mayor pro tem feels that we should celebrate each and every employee and honor each and every employee, and he's right as far as that issue is concerned, but it's impractical. And I want everyone to know that those of you who are leaving the city, you'll never leave us as far as our feeling towards you, and you'll always be welcome to come back and visit with us, and we extend all of our good feelings for your service to the Las Vegas community. But today, we're going to make an exception. We're making an exception because all of our employees are special, but there's one fellow who is very special to us, because he's here at each of our council meetings, and he's had a tremendous impact on our day-to-day obligations and responsibilities during these council meetings. With Terry Taylor, please join us. Terry? As you can see, there's a great deal... No, a great deal of affection when Terry came up here. He works diligently behind the scenes, and it's about time that he has a little bit of limelight. He's been with us nearly 34 years, and more than 20 of those years have been spent in these council chambers, providing assistance and support during his news conferences, special events, and during the council meetings, of course. He joined the city in 1975 as a temporary summer helper, and when the work was over, he left to go make ice cream. We'll have that later on in our agenda as well. Luckily for us, the staff at the time recognized his great work ethic and invited him to return to work for the city. And through the years, he has filled quite a few different roles in the city, and he's given tours of city hall, he's acted a foreman for a bit, and his work here in the council chambers will be remembered the most. I have to say that we had a remarkable experience...
I have to say that we had a remarkable experience and I think Terry really saved the day. I've never been a big fan of our seal for the city of Las Vegas. When I was elected nine years ago, I didn't like it then. I don't like it now. And everybody tells me if we change the seal, it's going to cost a lot of money and everybody's worried about money. I wasn't, but I was sort of voted down and we still have the same stupid seal. 9/11 came, that horrendous day in our country's history, and cities from all over the country were sending their flags back to New York to show their support for the people of New York and for the country while we were undergoing that horror show. And we were going to send the city flag and Terry says, "You can't," out of nowhere. And I said, "Why?" He said, "Look at it." As you see, it looks as though there's a plane going right through the building. And I had never noticed that nor did anybody else at the time, but I think that it could have caused us a great deal of embarrassment and certainly wasn't the right message to send back to our friends in New York City. But for Terry's vigilance, who knows what have happened. So I'll never forget that, Terry. You're a very special guy and we really appreciate everything that you've done for us and with us and we know that you're going to not leave us. You'll be back here plenty of times. And we're declaring today, the August 20th of 2008, Terry Taylor Day in the city of Las Vegas and we urge all of our citizens and employees to join us in celebrating your contributions and your work. Thank you, Terry. Thanks to both of you.
Well, thank you very much. The city and the council, you guys have been awesome to work for. The best council I've worked for.
And he doesn't have to say that because he's leaving.
Yeah. But it's been a pleasure. I've been blessed to have this job for so long. And I know I promised you that I'd stay until you left, but this, with the state insurance thing, it's just for me to... Time for me to go.
Yeah, it's a terrible shame. We're going to miss you and a lot of our employees, if I can have this back for a moment, a lot of our employees are making a choice now to leave the city because of a change in the law, which really makes it, it just is foolish for them to continue working here based on the fact that they would have to come out of their own pocket for their insurance. And I don't blame you at all, but we are going to miss you. We're going to miss you each and every day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Oh, I forgot the most important thing. There's a reason I forgot it, because I don't like it. No, that's not true. I love it. You're going to get... We're just a little slow on the draw, Terry. We're a little slow. We should have had it for you today, but you are going to get a one-of-a-kind gift from this city council. It's going to become a collector's item. Unfortunately, it's still being made.
A Terry bobblehead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want a box.
Carrie.
Remember Helen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, I understand.
But I'm not in city.
Okay, and seven, five, seven, nine.
Right.
And I give it to the last one.
So these two poker?
Um, no, 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 please, I'm hurting.
No, no, no.
Where are you going to do that?
Okay, thank you.
He was truly happy. It's very nice. Couldn't have a nicer fellow working. Okay. No problem. Okay, we'll call item number 11. Any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number 43, is work card appeal, Roberto A. Guille. Metro's asked to strike. Item 45 is a lease agreement between the State and Nevada Department and the city of Las Vegas for office space at 1040 West Owens Avenue. Councilman Barlow wants that one stricken. And item number 58 is bill number 200842. Councilman Barlow also wants to strike that item. Are there any other items at this time you need to bring forward? Seeing none, Your Honor, make a motion to bring these three items forward, take your profe action, please.
All right, thanks. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 12 is approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of July the 16th, 2008.
Yes, Your Honor. No additions or deletions. I make a motion for approval of the minutes, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
If the clerk could show an affirmative vote on item number 11?
All right, thank you. All right, items 13 through 41 are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward at this time off the consent calendar? All right, hearing none. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Your Honor. Make a motion to approve items 13 through 41 with all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 42 is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of vacant or abandoned dangerous building and assessed civil penalties located at 2029 North Olem Drive. The property owner is Juan Ruen, Sam Farsery. This is in Ward Five. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Devin Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. I am happy to tell you that we will not need to go forward with this action. We got ahold of the mortgage company that was carrying the foreclosure on this property, notified them of the possible civil $500 a day civil penalties that would be placed on this property. They got a local law firm here in town to get with us and resolve this manner, or this matter, and I have a check in my hand for all the fees that are currently owed at this property.
And I appreciate that. I saw Mr. Smith... Was it Saturday?
Yeah.
We saw each other at a sort of a social gathering over at Hemingway's cigar store and he told me this very good news. I think what this council did at our last council meeting, sent a message out to the community that we mean business as far as these blights that are being created in the community and that we are in fact serious when we say we're going to impose that $500 civil penalty from the time that the property owner is notified until such time as it appears in front of the council and thereafter until the matter is corrected. And I think that this is the proof in the pudding. And I asked Mr. Smith whether he would come here today, notwithstanding the fact that it's now a moot issue since we received the check to make that a matter of public record. I thank you very much for that. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is David Sanders. I'm a local council, retained by Countrywide, to make the appearance today. We work with Mr. Smith's office. He was very professional and we're glad that we were able to meet a resolution.
Well, I appreciate that, sir.
Glad that we were able to make a quick resolution, Mr. Smith.
Well, that's good and I thank you for being here today. I think it's very responsible of you appearing. I think that we're going to make a difference and we'll work with Countrywide. He's always been a good partner of ours and we'll make sure that this community is kept clean and that we don't have attractive nuisances and we don't have blights and Mr. Smith's doing a great job and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And just, I would like to also say that Countrywide has committed to us that on all their properties within the city of Las Vegas that they would work with us to get this resolved so we don't have to bring any more of their properties forward.
And I think that's a big deal. It's going to save time, it's going to save money, it's going to save embarrassment, it's going to rectify the problems. I think we're headed in the right track here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Did you know your Costco was closing?
No, it isn't. Don't say that to my constituents out there. It's not closing.
Excuse me. It may not be closing, but it's closing a significant portion which will affect your neighbors.
I appreciate that. I was told that they're going to be closing the pharmacy and I've received phone calls in my office that the folks who use that pharmacy are very upset. I told them in the meantime, we had a very nice pharmacist appear in front of us at our last council meeting who was right down the block from Costco and they should try that gentleman over at Emerald Pharmacy. And from what I heard from his customers, this is the kind of fellow who if one of his customers needs to have the drugs even delivered to their home, that he went out of his way to do that. They're also going to close down, as I understand it, the food court, which I'll miss because of the Hebrew National Hot Dogs. And they're also closing the photography picture section there. And a lot of people are upset about it. It's the private sector. I know the councilwoman has called the management there. I know I have called the management there. We're asking that they take the needs of the community into consideration. They're making a business decision here. The rest of the store apparently will stay open and they're going to make it into a, I think they call it a service center, where they will have even more bulk items that will be delivered to various businesses, restaurants and the like of the community.
And more business things, more lawyer things, more... It's really now, rather than meeting the needs of individual citizens, it's probably meeting the needs of businesses. But I think what Councilman Reese meant was it's going to shut down for a while, totally.
For the renovation, for the renovation. I went to a office depot yesterday. They're very, very generous. They gave 2,500 backpacks to different youth groups and schoolchildren in the community and I was honored that they allowed me to have 500 of them to give to a group that I felt were deserving and needful. And I spoke to the manager there and he is telling me that he's going to be in touch with our business development office about having a office depot in the downtown. They're now partnering with Fresh &amp; Easy apparently and they're having stores of about 25,000 square feet which would fit in with our downtown redevelopment and we're going to be following up with them and maybe we'll have multiple venues for people to consider as far as doing their shopping. But thank you. Appreciate it. Okay.
Do you want to strike?
Excuse me?
Do you want to strike the public chairman?
Yes. I move to strike. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item 44 is discussion and possible action on appeal of work card suspension for Abraham Z. Alsmadi. Mr. Alsmadi, are you here?
Here.
All right. Are you an interpreter, sir?
Yes, sir.
Please tell us your name and then if you would...
My name is Matt Daha and I'm a court interpreter.
Of what language, sir?
Arabic.
All right, thank you very much.
Your Honor, excuse me. May I? It's my understanding that based upon the confidential information that's been provided to me, that this gentleman's court case is going to be before my wife, who is a district court judge. Based upon that fact, I think it's appropriate for me to accuse myself and that's what I'm going to do.
All right, thank you, Councilperson. We appreciate that. All right, the gentleman from Metro, we welcome your remarks.
Good morning, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Barry Rannick, Metro Special Investigations. Last time we were here, August 6th, this was tabled because he had a court date on the 7th. That court date has come and gone and he did on August 7th plead guilty... I'm sorry, August 14th, plead guilty to open or gross lewdness, which is considered a gross misdemeanor in Nevada.
Right. At the same time, I understand that the... He was ordered by the court to surrender his business license pending sentencing and not to sell ice cream.
That's correct, Your Honor.
All right. So that's the status at this point. Did you wish to be heard, sir?
Yes, sir. He wrote... He wrote a few statements. I'll just summarize it.
All right, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, I wish I was before you on being an exemplar or ideal workman or businessman in the community. I have a clean records and I had the misfortune of being arrested and revoked. My license was suspended to work on an ice cream truck and that has ruined my life, my family, and I cannot make any living in these hard times. So I'm appealing to your sympathy to issue me a card so I can work and make a living. To work another job and train for it in these hard times, it's rather bleak for me. So I guess I accepted the court decision and my card was taken and I'm asking for mercy to get it back and so I can make a living.
All right, well, I appreciate that. I myself feel that when the gentleman entered the plea to this particular offense, that he, in my opinion, forfeited his right to
My financial needs again is... are in question and I'm losing my house and...
Feel very bad about all of that, but we have to protect our children. Yes?
If I could, to save a lot of grief and heartache here, I think it'd probably be better to me if we just went ahead. We've all had the backup. We understand what the charges were, what he put guilty to. At this time, Your Honor, I just want to make a motion to deny this application.
All right. That's the motion? Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Keep on begging. 46 is discussion and possible action regarding Temp... Oh, before we go there, I'm going to get in trouble again with my Mayor Pro Tem. Sergeant Alexander, could you come up, We got the bad news that Sergeant Reagan Alexander is retiring from Metro and he's been a real good partner to work with, always straight, always reasonable.
Thank you.
Always prepared. I really have appreciated the opportunity to have you appear in front of the council and to represent the community's interests as far as these work cards and other matters concerning special use permits. And I want to thank you on behalf of the council for your wonderful service to the city of Las Vegas and to this council.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. It's been a privilege. It really has and it's been an honor to work with not only this council, but the ones prior. And I want to thank also Jim DeFiore and Carol Meyer. They're awesome people that work hard every day at the city and have really, really been great team players working with us and I appreciate them and the council. Thank you. I didn't expect this, so... But thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
It's been a privilege.
Thank you for being here.
Mm-hmm.
Item 46 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new tavern license, subject to the provisions of the Planning and Fire Codes and Health Department Regulations. Irma Fragoso doing business at Backdoor Lounge at 1415 East Charleston Boulevard, which is in Ward Three. Is the applicant present?
Yes, she is.
Okay, fine.
If you know.
Ms. Meyer?
Mayor, councilmembers Carol Meyer, Finance and Business Services. This application is actually a change of ownership for an existing tavern. Ms. Fragosa has met our criteria for consideration for temporary approval of this tavern license and my recommendation would be approval subject to all conditions. It's my understanding that she's going to operate the tavern with the same venue that she has in the past and she's here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Fragosa, did you want to be heard?
Yes. I plan to operate the business as it has been.
Yes. I plan to operate the business as it has been run up until now. I think it's been open for about 10 years, 10 or 15 years, and we wish to continue it the same. No changes for now, so...
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Just a quick comment. You are going to be operating it yourself, not your brother?
I am operating it.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I may have a motion, please.
Yes, I'd move to follow staff recommendation for approval at this location, 1415 East Charleston, with this change of ownership, but I would like to have a six-month review.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 47 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a change of business name and a change of ownership for a supper club license from Mayflower Chinese Restaurant, doing business as Mayflower Cuisine, to Von Nuda, Inc., doing business as the Five Thai Cuisine at 4750 West Sahara Avenue in Suite 25. This is in Ward 1. Ms. Meyer?
Mayor, members of council, again, the applicants that we have on this application have met our criteria for consideration of approval of the temporary license, and my recommendation would be approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you.
And they're here to answer any questions.
Folks, would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm one of the... I'm a parent and owner with my husband.
I'm Edward P. Brown, Sr. I'm her husband.
Would you like to be heard? Or are you going to rest on the laurels of Ms. Meyer?
Well, just to correct, it's the V Thai Cuisine.
Oh, it's not Five?
No, it's the V...
V, okay.
The V Thai Cuisine.
All right. Tell us, what is your specialty, because I'm a big Thai fan.
It's a fine dining Thai food restaurant. I don't know if you've ever read the Mayflower Cuisine, but that was a fine dining Chinese restaurant. We purchased it from them in the beginning of January, so we're trying to adjust it to a fine dining Thai food restaurant, so...
Very good. Okay, well, as I say, I'm a big fan of that kind of food, and the spicier the better. Okay, very good. Okay, any comments or questions? I may have a motion, please. Councilwoman?
Yes, I want you to know that you're already making an impression in the community around you. I have a neighbor, Court Bishop, who eats there very often. He called me to tell you how great you were, and so the word is spreading that people are really enjoying the meals that you're serving. I'd like to move for approval with a six-month review.
All right. Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 48 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new supper club license. A and LLV LLC, doing business as Villa Brazil Steakhouse, at 1225 South Fort Apache Drive in Suite 100 in Ward 2. Ms. Meyer?
Mayor, members of council, again, the applicants that we have for this application have met our criteria for consideration of temporary approval of this supper club license, and my recommendation would be approval subject to all conditions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
David Brown, 520 South Fourth Street. We just leave it up to you. Both applicants are here. If you have any questions.
All right. Are there any questions, Ms. Meyer or the applicants? What's that delicious dish where they put all the meat on that skewer? What's that called?
That's a churrascaria.
Right. You gonna have that?
Yes, that's right.
As much as you could eat?
All you can eat. It would be a pleasure if you guys there.
I'll tell you, that's the greatest. I have a daughter-in-law who was... She was raised in Salvador, Brazil, so she's going to be looking forward to being combed at your place.
That's right. It would be a pleasure.
No, I'm just kidding. Please, I'm kidding.
Who's Ward is this in?
This is in Ward 2.
When you talk about comps, I mean...
Okay, that's terrific. It's good to have.
Do you want to make a motion, or should I make?
You make.
My motion is for approval.
All right. Let's vote on that, please.
Chief.
All right. Before we post, did you want to tell us anything about the menu and the restaurant? There's a good chance to do.
It would be a pleasure to ask any questions that you guys have.
Okay. Tell us about the menu, because we're not really used to Brazilian food up here.
Basically, there's a Brazilian concept that we have all different kinds of meat comes in a skewer, like you mentioned before. We have a gourmet salad bar with the different recipes from all over the world, and we have different cuts of beef that comes, you know. The way it's come up, a variety of skewers that, like you mentioned before, all you can eat. And we have Brazilian drinks and...
What is that, cacha?
Caperinha.
What is that?
Caperinha. Caperinha is lime, sugar, and Brazilian rum.
Yeah, but cacha?
Cashas, that's right. It's like a Brazilian rum.
It's good stuff. Well, you don't even know you're getting drunk.
Yeah, it's like a lemonade.
It is, until you wake up the next morning.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Post, please. Unless you want to change your vote. Okay. All right. Motion carries. Good luck to you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 49 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a change of business name and a change of ownership for beer wine cooler on sale license from Hyun Sik Gang, doing business as Yokohama Sushi, to Yoko Management, Inc., doing business as Yoko Sushi, at 2351 North Rainbow Boulevard in Suite 103.
Mayor, members of council, again, the applicants that we have on this change of ownership, change of business name for this beer wine cooler on sale license have met our criteria for consideration of temporary approval, and my recommendation would be approval subject to all conditions.
All right. Thank you. Folks, why don't you identify yourselves for the record, please? Tell us your names.
My name is Sang Ja Young Kim. Yeah, I'd like to have my legal license.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Andy Yang, I'm her son.
Okay. Any specialties that you want to tell the people who are watching this about?
Yes, we have all-you-can-eat specials, lunch and dinner, and we have a fabulous spicy tuna roll and sushi and California rolls, so come down anytime.
I love the spicy tuna roll. Okay, that's terrific. Any other questions? Councilor Barlow?
Yes, Mayor. If you have not eaten at this restaurant, I highly recommend that you do. My wife and I hang out there every Friday, so it really is good. So, thank you all for the great service and the great job that you all have done. So I would like to move for approval.
All right. Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you, folks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Take care.
I see at the restaurant.
Item 50 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new hypnotherapist license for Margaret Ann Majors, doing business as Mind Over Matter Hypnotherapy at 416 South Jones Boulevard. This is in Ward 1.
Mayor, members of council, Ms. Majors has met our criteria for consideration of temporary approval of this hypnotherapist license, and it would be my recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
All right. Thank you. Are you Ms. Majors?
Yes.
Hi. What is a hypnotherapist?
We teach self-hypnosis for anything that anybody might want to achieve, a goal. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's interesting. Do you have to have any special training for that?
Yes, you do.
Do you go to a hypnotherapist-type school?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. I've been studying it for about 15 years, and I went to school with a local school who's approved here in the state of Nevada, Capstone Institute.
And this is done without the use of any kind of medication or drugs? It's just hypnosis?
Yes.
So if you want to quit drinking gin, she could probably help you.
It's the whole thing. I don't want to quit.
Can help you drink more.
I'll be buying. I'll be buying. All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, this is Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Move to approve with all conditions.
All right. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Item 51 is discussion and possible action regarding a six-month review of a supper club license for Galleria's Las Vegas at 1780 North Buffalo Drive in Suite 101. This is in Ward 1 as well. Mr. DeFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, this was required, a six-month review on the operations of the business. We can say that Mr... The applicant here today has met all the criteria for consideration of a permanent license. There's only been one call for service at this location. We would like to suggest that he make sure that the employees have all the proper work cards and the health cards and the alcohol awareness cards, but we're ready to recommend a permanent license to be issued today.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir. Be happy to hear from you?
No, no, sir.
All right. Identify...
My name is Ramiro Rubio.
Thank you very much. All right. Are there any questions of Mr. DeFiore or Mr. Rubio? All right. Seeing none, Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Item 52 is discussion and possible action regarding a 90-day review of a psychic arts and science license for Clarence Sherick, doing business as Zarin at 6848 West Charleston Boulevard in Ward 1.
I didn't wear my short tie this morning.
I noticed. Mr. DeFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, over the last 90 days, we have had no problems with Mr. Sherick, and we have had no complaints. We would recommend that his psychic license be approved on a permanent basis.
All right. Mrs. Sherick?
Hi. Thank you very much.
Happy to hear from you. How's business?
It's pretty good.
Good.
Now, we got a lot of unhappy people right now.
Because of the economy?
Yeah, very much. That's the number-one issue.
Well, you tell them with your psychic powers that...
It's going to get better in November, Mayor.
I agree with you.
I agree with you, too.
I think right now, we see the housing market coming back in the slightest way, but still it's a turnaround, and there's a certain, I think, buoyancy as far as the public now that they see the end is near, as far as the down spiral, and we'll be as successful as we've always been. And I think that the two of us are on the same track. I think it's going to be a lot sooner than later.
2009 is going to be a bonus year for the city. Mark my words.
Okay. If Zarin says it, you can go to the bank on it.
Okay.
Very good.
Bless you, God.
Okay. Councilwoman?
I'm just wondering, should we condition it on their promise?
Oh, yes!
Move to approve with all conditions.
All right. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
God bless you guys.
Thank you.
Which is who's specialty is going to be?
Item 53 is discussion and possible action regarding a temporary change of business name and change of ownership for beer wine cooler off-sale license from Zach's Mini Market, doing business as Zach's Gas Plus, to Midget Market, Inc., doing business as Green Valley Grocer 44 at 251 North Dallas Boulevard. This is in Ward 3. Mr. DeFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Crawford today has come forward for consideration for temporary approval of this change of ownership and change of business name. Mr. Crawford has been in the Las Vegas Valley for many number of years and certainly is well-respected, and I think we're ready to recommend a approval of the temporary license.
Very good. Mr. O'Reilly?
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmember Tim O'Reilly of the O'Reilly Law Group, present on behalf of the applicant, along with me is the applicant.
Good morning, Rick Crawford, and with me is my COO, Cliff Beadle.
Very good. Nice having you gentlemen here today. Are there any questions for any of the gentlemen? All right. Seeing none, this is Mayor Protem.
Yes, Your Honor. Just because of Mr. O'Reilly, I'll move for approval with all staff conditions.
All right. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to everybody.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Item 54 is Senior Citizens Advisory Board. This is for the term of Pauline Kennedy. Ms. Kennedy resigned on July 25th of this year, and her term expires on June of 2011. This would be, I believe, Councilwoman Tarkanian's appointment or recommendation. Have you had an opportunity, Councilwoman, to give this much thought?
Yes, I did. And I'd like to recommend that Patty Brown, who's a very active, hard-working, energetic resident of Sartini Plaza, be appointed to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's vote on that recommendation, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Moving along. Oh, thanks. Thanks. Thank you. Excuse me? What's happening? Oh, you're online. Thank Okay. Item 55 is Bill Number 2008-34. Amends the Business License Code pertaining to the license application process, licensee regulations, administrative fees, business license categories, designation of license agencies and officials, compliance with the amendments to state law and other related matters. There's a note that the summary of this bill has been amended to read, "Amends the Business License Code pertaining to the license application process, licensee regulations, business license categories, designation of license agencies and officials, compliance with amendments to state law, and to provide for other related matters." Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 28, here's 34, First Amendment, orders for amending the provisions of the Business License Code pertaining to license application process, licensing regulations, business license categories, designation of license agencies and officials, compliance with amendments to state law, and provide for other related matters.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
For clarification, Mr. Jerbic, and I believe some of my colleagues may have the same question, is this the item that we remove the...
Fees.
Fees from temporarily?
Yes, Councilman, that's correct. All the changes to fees that were represented in the original bill have been taken out.
It's not all fees. It's just the ones that were changed.
Right. The ones that were changed, that's correct.
And the plan is to address it again later.
Thank you for the clarification.
It's Councilman Brown?
And, Your Honor, I'd just like to... I sat in on one of the recommending committee meetings, and I just want certainly the council to know and the public to know that Mr. DeFiore, the attorney's office, they do a lot of work behind the scenes. When we are impacting, like, for instance, I know the Board of Realtors were very active in this legislation, and some other groups that impact, that we impact with some of these ordinances. But there's a lot of work behind the scenes as far as the outreach, meeting with those stakeholder groups, and it's appreciated because we all get those phone calls, and to be able to go to Jim and some other staff members at the city and have them respond that we're working with the industry, we're working with the stakeholder group. That's something that is, I won't say unique to the city of Las Vegas, but we've been very proactive under Dr. Selby's leadership to get out there and make sure that when we pass legislation that's impacting these stakeholders, that they have a seat at the table. Just wanted to recognize that.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? All right. The Councilwoman, your motion, please.
Move to approve.
That's as First Amendment?
It's First Amendment. That's correct.
As First Amendment, yes.
Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 56, this is Bill Number 2008-35, repeals obsolete provisions of the municipal code relating to the city's representation on the District Board of Health. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 28-35, orders to repeal in its entirety Chapter 2.36 of the municipal code relating to the city's representation on the District Board of Health and provide for other related matters.
Thank you. Any motion, please, Councilwoman?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Let's vote. Post. Motion carries. Item 57 is Bill Number 2008-41, amends provisions of the municipal code pertaining to certain fingerprint checks to include more detailed references to state law in order to meet new requirements of the Federal Bureau of Investigation, and to expressly set forth the city's authority to require and process federal fingerprint checks for business license applicants within certain license categories. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Before reading the bill, let me make a record of that. I understand that yesterday at recommending committee, there were some amendments to this bill. Mr. Steed's going to put them on the record after I read it. Bill Number 28-41, in order to amend the provisions of Miss Gold pertaining to certain fingerprint checks, including more detailed references to state law in order to meet new requirements of the Federal Bureau of Investigation, to expressly set forth the city's authority to require and process federal fingerprint checks for business license applicants with certain license categories, and provide for other related matters.
Thank you, Mr. Steed.
Thank you. On page 2 of the bill, in subsection C, is the list of categories that were to be included, and two categories were left off, and so it was recommended to the committee that those two categories, namely Reflexology and Wedding Chapel, be added to the bill, and that was the recommendation of the committee yesterday. So that would be a First Amendment.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions? Councilwoman, your motion, please.
Move to approve with First Amendment.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Items 59 through 62, which are Bills 2008-37 through 2008-40, are eligible for adoption at a later meeting, so we're going to move on to the new bills. And new bill item 63, which is Bill 2008-43, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2008. Mr. Jerbic, could you read that, please?
Let me have to, Your Honor. And as he walks out of the chambers, I also wanted to say goodbye to Sergeant Alexander and thank him for his work and his squad's work on that last fingerprint bill. We've been on that for quite some time, and he was instrumental in getting that pushed. And with that, I'd like to read the only new bill, which is 2008-43, in order to adopt regulations governing stormwater and stormwater management and compliance with state and federal laws and regulations for other related matters.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman, will you be available on September 2nd?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Good. And Councilor Barlow, will you be available?
Yes, I will be.
All right. Then this bill will be assigned to you, and... All right, then. This bill will be assigned to you, and thank you, everybody. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call item number sixty-four. Any items from the afternoon sessions that the council, staff, and/or the applicant wished to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number sixty-eight as a vacation, twenty-two seventy-eight Patricia F. Jacobs et al., Comstock Drive between Vegas Drive and Gold Hill Avenue. Councilman Barlow would like that to be held in abeyance until our September the seventeenth, two thousand and eight meeting. And item seventy-one is a special use permit, twenty-eight two ninety-three Clearwire Communications Mayhill LLC, forty-two twenty-one West Charleston Boulevard. The applicant would like that to be held until our September the seventeenth, two thousand and eight meeting. Are there any of the items, councilmembers, we need to bring forward at this time? Hearing none, Your Honor, make a motion to bring these two items forward and take the floor. Your action, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. All right, now, on the consent agenda, does anybody wish to have any of those items brought forward? I believe Councilman Brown would like to have items sixty-five and sixty-six brought forward. I'll read those into the record.
Yes. Do you have to read them into the record? Or can you just, he just wants to change one of the conditions to one year instead of two years?
That's correct, but I believe I have to read them into the record. On sixty-five, EOT two eight eight seven seven, the applicant is Agave Management of the Owners Cabalas de Oro Estates LLC, requests for an extension of time to improve waiver of Title eighteen point twelve point one hundred to allow twenty-four-foot-wide private streets where thirty-seven feet is the minimum required on five acres west of the intersection of Cheyenne Avenue and the I-215 Beltway. This is in Ward Four. The staff recommends approval. And the other item is sixty-six, which is EOT two eight eight seven six. Same owner, same applicant, request for an extension of time of an approved site development plan review for proposed thirty-unit attached single-family development on five acres west of the intersection of Cheyenne and the I-215 Beltway in Ward Four as well. Mayor Proton?
Yes, Your Honor. I move that we approve these items with changing the extension of time to one year instead of two years.
All right, that's the motion. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, items sixty-seven through seventy may be considered in one motion, one vote. They're considered routine, non-public hearing and public hearing items with no condition changes. All public hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an applicant or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request that that item removed from this portion of the agenda. So I'm gonna declare now items sixty-eight through seventy as public hearings, and they're now open.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes.
That's items sixty-seven, sixty-nine, and seventy, as sixty-eight has already been abated.
All right, sixty-seven, sixty-nine, and seventy?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, very good. Then, item number sixty-nine is DIR two nine oh one nine. A water feature exemption. The applicant owner is Sunshine Holdings. Request to allow the operation of a water feature which totals one hundred and fifty-three square feet at an existing commercial shopping center on three point seven five acres and ninety-four thirty-six West Lake Mead Boulevard. That's in Ward Four. Item sixty-nine is SUP two eight three eight two, special use permit. The applicant is Walmart Stores, Inc. The owner, Pam Pacific Development, Inc. Requests for special use permit for a one hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and forty-two square foot retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off sale at thirty forty-one North Rainbow Boulevard in Ward Five. And item seventy is SUP two eight four six seven, special use permit. The applicant owner is Amex Enterprises LLC, requests for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler or off sale establishment within a proposed general retail store with a waiver to allow a distance separation of three hundred and seventy feet from protected use where four hundred feet is required at five forty Northeastern Avenue, suite number one forty-five. This is in Ward Three. May I ask whether or not anybody wishes to be heard on any of these items at the public hearing? All right, I see none, so I'll close the public hearings. May I have a motion then to approve items sixty-seven, sixty-nine, and seventy?
Yes, Your Honor. Make a motion to approve those items with all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Great. Okay.
Item seventy-one? Seventy-two.
Right, seventy-two. Item seventy-two, seventy-three, and seventy-four. Seventy-two is WVR two six three eight nine. It's a waiver. It's gonna be a public hearing. The applicant owner is Wolf Creek Homeowners Association. Request for a waiver of Title eighteen point twelve point one three oh to allow Canyon Ranch Street to end in a dead-end street where cul-de-sac is required, generally located between Amber Station Avenue and Delany Skies Avenue. That's in Ward Six. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. Seventy-three is SUP two six eight two three, special use permit related to the prior item. It's gonna be a public hearing. The applicant owner is Wolf Creek Homeowners Association. Request for a special use permit for private streets within an existing residential development, generally located east of Jones Boulevard, approximately six hundred and sixty feet north of Horse Drive in Ward Six. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. Seventy-four is VAC two six four one eight. This is related to the prior two items. The applicant owner is Wolf Creek Homeowners Association, petition to vacate Amber Station Avenue, Soaring High Street, Glamare Avenue, Chestnut Run Avenue, Dakota Trace Circle, and a portion of Canyon Ranch Street, generally located east of Jones Boulevard, six hundred and sixty feet north of Horse Drive in Ward Six. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. Seventy-four is VAC two six four one eight. This is related to the prior two items. The applicant owner is Wolf Creek Homeowners Association, petition to vacate Amber Station Avenue, Soaring High Street, Glamare Avenue, Chestnut Run Avenue, Dakota Trace Circle, and a portion of Canyon Ranch Street, generally located east of Jones Boulevard, six hundred and sixty feet north of Horse Drive in Ward Six. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. Since these are all public hearings, I now declare them open. Is anybody representing the applicant here? Anybody for the applicant? Yes, sir. Why don't you step up here, please? And please identify yourself for the record.
My name is John Mack, and I'm eighty-five oh eight Dakota Trace Court.
All right, I'm going to ask you to please repeat that. Unfortunately, the mic wasn't on.
I'm sorry. My name is John Mack, and I'm a resident at eighty-five oh eight Dakota Trace Court in the community of Wolf Creek.
And you're representing the Wolf Creek Homeowners Association?
Yes, I'm a board member and represent...
Very good. Would you like to tell us anything at this point, or just have us do what we have to do?
Well, since it's all been recommended to be approved, I wouldn't want to take any more time to explain the details unless you have specific questions. I could give the history or any question that you might have.
That's very fair. Thank you. Are there any questions of the gentleman? All right, folks, would anyone else like to be heard on this? It's a public hearing on any of these items. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilor Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. Just to let you know, Wolf Creek Homeowners Association, absolutely wonderful to work with. They, we've got all of the neighborhood's permission to go ahead and move this direction as what I'd asked them to do, except for eleven properties, I believe, and I think eight of those were bank-owned. And the other three, and I'll submit to the clerk for the record, your attempts to contact the other three properties, there were certified registered return letters in there, and the list of all of the homeowners within the association that you contacted for approval. With that, Your Honor, I move to follow planning commission and staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item seventy-two.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post. You did a good job on that. Post.
Come on, Ricky.
Motion carries. Seventy-three, please.
And I would also like to follow planning commissions and staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item seventy-three.
Thank you. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. And seventy-four, please.
And seventy-four, Your Honor, I would also move to follow planning commissions and staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for your time, especially Councilman Ross for his guidance throughout this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seventy-five and seventy-six. Seventy-five is GPA two five six two five, general plan amendment. Be a public hearing. The applicant, City of Las Vegas, the owner, USA, request to amend a portion of the Centennial Hill Sector Plan, of the master plan from PCD Plan Community Development to PF, Public Facilities, on one point three one seven acres at the southwest corner of Ann Road and the two fifteen Beltway in Ward Six. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Seventy-six is ZON two five six two six, a rezoning related to the prior item. It's gonna be a public hearing. The applicant, City of Las Vegas, the owner, USA, request for rezoning from U, undeveloped PCD Plan Community Development General Plan designation, to CV, Civic, on one point three, on one three one point seven acres at the southwest corner of Ann Road and the two fifteen Beltway, Ward Six. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. These are both public hearings, and they're now declared open.
Mr. Mayor, Tom Perigo of the Planning and Development Department, give you the presentation on this?
Very good. Mr. Perigo?
Mayor and counsel, consistent with the city's master plan, staff is recommending approval of these items in order to set aside land for future public facility needs in the northwest in Centennial Hills area. With the population growth that's expected and the location of this site next to a major freeway interchange and across from the freeway from existing development, this site was chosen in addition to very few sites of this size that are available to set aside for public facility needs in the future. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and staff would recommend approval.
Is this a SNPL land?
Your Honor, it is BLM property. It really doesn't have anything to do with SNPL other than, under that act, we go in and obtain a lease and so on.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, folks, any questions of Mr. Perigo or comments? Yes, please come up and identify yourselves. These are public hearings, and they're open.
Juanita Burrows, five five six five North Campbell Road, Las Vegas, Nevada. First off, I want to go on record that I'm against this zoning change without any formal site plans in the area, and that's my big concern. And what worries me about putting things through without a zoning change, I lived in another area in the city that was zoned quarter acres, and they chose to put in a senior citizens. It was supposed to be two stories high with a park behind it as a buffer. Eight months later, it was four stories high with a park with no notification of the neighbors of the changes or site plan. And I think that this goes against what neighborhoods are about. If you're going to change, we need to know what your site plans are going to be.
Can I ask you this? Where was that other project?
Mohawk Street, right off of Charleston.
Mohawk and what?
Mohawk and Charleston. The senior citizens center is the Sartina Plaza.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry.
It was about fifteen years ago, about twenty years ago.
Okay.
I also watched the acreage across the street from me, and Lois knows about this one, changed from what was supposed to be a park when I bought my house to a middle school, which I fought, and the middle school did not go into. So, you know, I see things, and it scares me. Yes, we need some of this property changed, but just changing it without a site plan, without the residents knowing what's going to happen, is frightening. And so if you are going to change the zoning, I would ask that you put stipulations in place. Most of the land surrounding it with homeowners is county land. It's not city. We're all on half acres or more. We're rural, there's a neighborhood preservation area. We would like to know what you're going to do. Let us be part of it. Don't just automatically put it in and then decide, we don't need to know what's going on, because that's what's happened over and over and over again in areas like this. So, you know, while I don't want to see this changed at the time, if you decide, would you please put some stipulations in? One, Nevada Republic cannot come back in and decide they want their trash site. Mr. Brown has fought that with us. Two, that you give a good notification to the area. Say, everybody from Tropical to Lone Mountain and from Durango to the area that's going to be rezoned, that we get notice whenever there's a site plan up for it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Marvin Rogie. I live at fifty-five eighty-five Michele Crest, which is the first house eastbound on Ann Road on the south side of the street and two fifteen. This is sore thumb, gentlemen, but I gotta say, the city has already enjoyed a tremendous achievement. You probably won't hardly believe what I'm gonna tell you, but the first meeting we had had about six hundred people in it, maybe five hundred, at the Santa Fe Station. All of them pleading, "Don't do this." But as time goes on, my constituents have disappeared. You're wearing us out. Mr. Ross has successfully kept us from believing we could ever get anywhere without, unless we annex. Mr. Brown was on our side, and so we've been through a lot. The people of Las Vegas put you in office. We, the people, are living in Clark County, are citizens of Las Vegas. We don't get to vote for you. We don't get to help you campaign, but we're still a constituent to this city. We all pay taxes. We all contribute to the cause of our great city. I've been a resident of this city since nineteen sixty-three. Several of you weren't even born yet. Several of you weren't even born yet, but Oscar and I have known each other for a long time.
A long time.
Our kids-
We were born.
Took piano lessons together.
That's true.
So I feel like I have a real ally there. I don't need to tell you, you took an oath to serve the citizens of Las Vegas. You promised to be fair and reasonable in your decisions. We are citizens. Let me make this short, because it looks like you've wore us out. I want you to be my next door neighbor for the next five minutes. I want you to be in the house next to me. I want your planning committee to be my neighbor, and I want you to look at this plan of what you've talked about doing. Yes, you promised us no police detention center. Yes, you promised us no trash dump. Yes, you promised us no six hundred school buses. Well, gentlemen, we already put up with over a thousand truckloads of sand coming out of the great sand pit that supports this city. So we're giving a lot. The point I'm making here is that if you are my neighbor, and you look at this plan, and you just realize that the letter that came from your desk, from your department, from your commission, reduced the value of my house from thirty to fifty percent and virtually made it impossible to sell, because who wants to be next to any of this stuff? Yeah, maybe you find, ladies and gentlemen, and say, "No, we ain't going to do the trash dump. No, we ain't going to do the detention center." But as soon as you're off the bench, the next chairman up here says, "I didn't make that promise." We listened to that on the interchange. We were told them things wouldn't happen. But now we're told, well, those guys are no longer in authority. They have gone their way, and what they committed to, we don't have to live up to. Yeah, none of it's in writing. It's all in oral meetings, just like this one. So, being my neighbor, it wouldn't take us five minutes to find a solution. The solution is right under your noses. It's right on the same street. It's less than a mile away. It's protected by the mountains on three sides, and it will never become a residential area. And yes, it's BLM land. BLM land is hard to negotiate. How do you like to have a thousand neighbors with you when you go to negotiate with BLM? Because that area would easily house all of your public works, your detention center, your six hundred school buses, that is a constant item of mention, and even the trash trucks. And you know what? Nobody could see them, because they're two-thirds shielded by the mountains and no residential area involved. Wouldn't that be a lot better? Wouldn't that be a compliment to this city? There's nothing you ever built in the city that's a public works area that becomes a beautiful park. There's nothing beautiful about any of those elements. But my thought to you is, please think about that. Please think about that. I want to thank you for listening to me, and the only closing comment is, Oscar, I understand just recently, a lady gave you an option to vote her way, or she would have her body cremated and spread in your front yard.
Yes, that was a-
I have seven hundred-
I didn't know whether it was a threat or a promise, Marv.
I have seven hundred people already making arrangements for cremation if you vote the wrong way.
Thank you very much. Boy, would you like a curse. Please don't bring me any bad news.
John Kristenick, five five six five Michele Crest. I have been coming to planning commission meetings for about six months, and I think I've only maybe missed one. Your staff has presented a great deal of detail. The very first time, we were faced with the proverbial trash dump. The detention center, we had police officers there that tell us what a detention center consisted of, as well as a representative from Republic Trust. Then the school, and their six hundred buses. That was the very first time I heard anything going on. Let me assure you, everyone at that very first meeting was dead set against that. We already absorb traffic noise, dust. No one has more dust than us created by the sand pit. We're living with that. Now you're asking us, at that particular meeting, live with a dump, live with a jail, and live with six hundred buses, all of which creates more trucks, slow-moving, whether they're dangerous or not, everybody look out for themselves when they're driving. But the noise, the sound and the light pollution was going to be astounding. And my comment to your staff, and they recommended, every meeting, and I think there's been at least six, as well as the homeowners association that was created for this, to fight this issue, unanimously, not one homeowner was ever for it. And then the staff hears it, they say, "Yeah, we hear you. We listen. We listen. We listen." And what did they do? Unanimous approval. Never was a one homeowner on that side. Did they ever even had one kind thing? I think I was the only one that ever had one kind thing to say, and that was, "Look, we're all part of a greater community of Las Vegas. We've already got one eyesore pollution creator of dramatic proportions, which is the sand pit. We would take one more of whatever you wanted to put. If you go and annex five million seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of property, you're not going to put one little doodad, I call it, piece of garbage, in my backyard." And let me tell you, it is in my backyard. I am facing directly at it. I've walked that property, and you can talk about your thirty-five-foot barrier and whatever, you're still gonna, I'm still gonna see it. I'm gonna see all of it. That barrier, I'll see the barrier, but I'll see everything above it, because that land slopes pretty dramatically. So you can build a barrier down here, but your slope is up like that, you're gonna, we're gonna see it, smell it, taste it, and we're gonna have to fight the traffic that's created by that. My contention to your staff is, why do you need a hundred and thirty-one acres? Granted, he showed me the plot, there is no other suitable-sized property. I can understand that. There is no other suitable-sized property unless you go, like Mr. Rogie said, you go and, because this is supposedly a ten-year plan, and it may take you a couple of years to get that BLM land authorized, this other site, which is much more desirable. Why are you going after a hundred and thirty-one acres? Five million seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet? That means a lot. You're building a city, or could. Why not go get a five-acre plot? Put it here. Put it there. Why are you giving us all of your, whatever garbage you have, and I mean garbage, it's going to wind up out in the northwest? All of these people, where is the fair share used throughout this city? You grab a hundred and thirty-one acres, whatever crap comes up, it's going into the northwest, and that's unfair. We already have the huge sand pit, dust, noise, smell, pollution, blah, 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 blah. I think the answer to the problem is, don't go grab a hundred and thirty-one acres. Unless you want to build a couple golf courses up there, city, why not build some municipal golf courses? I don't care what you do with it, but don't go throwing a hundred and thirty-one acres of stuff in my backyard that I gotta look at, smell, fight the traffic, fight the trucks, hear the noise. Plus, you're talking about any kind of a maintenance facility, that's a twenty-four-hour deal. Buses run during the day, and they do maintenance on it at night. I live there. I'm not against growth. I would say, give us one of your garbage ideas. I mean that not bluntly, but put a police station, put a whatever. One, on grand five acres. If you're going to be in a land grab, plus, we can't vote for any of you. None of us. So you guys are making decisions that impact my financial position, my quality of life, all because you want a hundred and thirty-one acres. Grab it and put it in my backyard. I appreciate your consideration, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Name's Sam Pearson, new resident, fifty-four seventy-five Ruffian. I live four streets down from the two fifteen and Ann, to the south, one block, new cul-de-sac all by myself. Building a ten thousand square foot under roof home right there. Bought it last year. Wasn't aware that there was even an exit at Ann Road, because at the time, back when I had looked into it two years ago, there wasn't an exit there. Like the gentleman said there, not that I'm totally against development. I'm in the trade, so I understand we are going to build, we're going to keep pushing forward, pretty much. But it would be nice if it was made a little smaller, so that it wasn't all right in my backyard. That's all.
All right, thank you very much. Did you want to be heard, sir?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Goodman, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Mark Bloom. I live at ten one seventy-five West Tropical Parkway. That's Tropical and Egan Crest. I'm very frustrated and perplexed, as many of the folks that have already spoken, and I'm sure that the planning commission has heard from, as to why in the world would we do something like this in this area? And I want to speak from a more global perspective, rather than the actual services that are going to go there. And what I'd like to speak is that I understand what slated is a public facility change. When I say I want to speak globally about this, the reason most of us, yourselves included, moved to this great city is for the openness, the ruralness, the Wild West in us, the exploration in us, the great Americans that we all are, and as Americans, we all have that yearning to explore and to conquer somewhat of the unknown. The area of the northwest where the zoning is going to take place is absolutely some of the last rural area left in this town, thus the rural designations and the RNP's. And to see it rezoned for some future allocation that we don't know what it could be is preposterous. Ladies and gentlemen, it is absolutely a disservice to the citizens. It's a disservice to myself, and had I had any inkling that this town would be chopped up the way it continues to be, I would have moved somewhere else. I understand that the town is growing. I don't like it. I think that we're in a vicious circle, and I think the only way to stop this vicious circle is places like this. And when I say a vicious circle, ladies and gentlemen, if you keep rezoning land and keep developing land, more people are going to come. The more people that come, we're going to run out of public facilities. Well, let's build some public facilities to support that new homeowners. Then we have these great big public facilities. We have to justify that, so let's build some more houses. And the cycle continues to where the quality of life becomes zippo. What happens then is, the developers get rich. The homes, the people that develop the land and the, I don't want to mention names, but the people that build the houses become wealthy. The people that buy the houses, like myself, we start to get frustrated because our quality of life decreases. Then the developers go to another town and screw that up. Pardon my language. They mess that up. And that goes on until the entire area, be it Las Vegas, be it Phoenix, be it Scottsdale, wherever you want to go, is so built up and so polluted that people start leaving, and they start exiting the beautiful area that they moved in. The last point that I want to make, and I thought about this driving over here, is that on the news and in the paper and in the media, especially if you go away from Las Vegas, you hear that Las Vegas does not have a real sense of community, a real sense of pride. There's no civic duty here. There's no roots. It's just very transient, and nobody really cares about the city. We do care. But I got to tell you, one reason that this perception is there is because you move into an area like this, build a beautiful home, turn around, and everything changes. And after a while, you get so frustrated, and you get so fed up that you feel like you don't have roots, and you feel like there is no sense of community, and there is no sense of civic duty, because people figure, eh, you know, they're going to do what they're going to do. What can I do about it? And that's what is very hurtful to me, to travel around the country and hear, oh, you're from Las Vegas, you don't have any civic pride. You don't have any real communities there, do you? Oh, by God, we do have communities, and you're looking at one right here at the end in the two fifteen. But it's a wonderful community, and it's a rural community, and we'd like to keep it rural. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard at this time?
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Harof, fifty-six eighty Ruffian Road. We are the second house off of Ann, which is four blocks down from the two fifteen. I simply want to ask, please, don't rezone this until you have actual plans, you know what you want to put in there, so we all have a voice in what goes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else like to be heard at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing then. I was under the impression, and perhaps wrongfully so, listening to what I'm listening to today, that there was a public meeting on this, and I was advised that everything was copacetic, for lack of a better phrase. Could somebody tell me what took place at the public meeting? Mr. Perigo, you want to tell me that?
Yes, Your Honor, there were a number of public meetings. The first was on February twelfth. There were fourteen residents. June tenth, sixty-four residents, and July fifteenth, twenty-four residents. In addition to the meeting that the homeowners, or the neighborhood group held at the Santa Fe, where, like the gentleman said, four or five hundred people there. As this project has evolved, it has been a moving target, and I can understand why there is confusion. At the time we started this project, there was tremendous growth pressure and tremendous demand for public facilities and the need for this land. That growth has obviously softened, and so now, continuing with the policies of the master plan, we see that it's necessary to move forward with just setting the land aside for future public facility needs. The needs that we originally started with are no longer there immediately, but the vision for, the need for city service yard in the future is still definitely there, and other public facilities. At the meetings, there was, there were a lot of people with a lot of comments. The folks who have talked today have been to most of the meetings, as they've said, and their view and opinion has been consistent. A number of people who have attended the meetings, over time, as they began to understand more and more what we're doing, have said, well, that they're not quite as concerned. And the main point, I think, is that, and this is what, you know, I've been told, and obviously, they're not here to speak for themselves, so it's just what the conversations I've had with folks. An important point is that, and I think this is one thing that people understand, and why maybe some people aren't here today, is that any future development of the site by any public or private agency will require approval of a site plan by the planning commission and the city council at a publicly noticed public hearing. And so that, once they understood that nothing is being contemplated for development at this time, I think that maybe has changed some people's thinking on the action that the city's taking now, understanding the need to set aside land, BLM land that we don't have to pay for, to save the taxpayers' money for future needs.
All right, I appreciate that explanation. All right, I appreciate that explanation. I will say this to Mr. Rogie, let's do what we have to do up here. You made a comment that there's no record being made, that it's just an oral exchange, that that's inaccurate, Marv. There is a record being made by our clerks here, it's a dual record in effect, it's a record not only of the videotaping of these proceedings, which are part of the official record, but also, the minutes reflect a verbatim transcript of everything that's being said here. So if that gives anybody any solace, that there's a record, there is a record. You may not like what the record's going to reflect, but there is a record, so that people can be held accountable in some future time. All right? Would any council, any council member have any comment? Councilman Brown, did you want to be heard?
I just wanted to ask Councilman Ross that, if you're feeling, knowing your ward well, and better than the rest of us know it, if your feeling is that you move ahead with this, could you put a condition in there that when these public meetings are held, that the zoning, the area for which the notices for the public hearing are doubled? You know, in other words, so that a larger, if there is some concern that they're not being, you know, getting the notice, or they might not know, if this is, as our first speaker stated, if this is a significant fear, would it be possible to put in a condition to ensure that the notice area is doubled? I just know that sometimes in my ward, I feel everybody's noticing, and I find, oh my gosh, it ended up a few streets short or something, and in that way, perhaps, some of those who are concerned now would feel more comfortable knowing that they would be fully notified.
Well, Councilwoman, if I may, Your Honor, respond to Councilwoman's question. When this item was originally posted, I had asked staff to increase the required notification area anyway, because there was no one adjacent to this property. Doubling that notification area, absolutely not a problem to add to a condition of this. I'm going to repeat what Mr. Perrigo already said. Any use that comes forward on this parcel will have to go through the entire public process all over again. We are essentially just setting this parcel aside today, as a BLM piece reserved for the city of Las Vegas for future uses. Maybe it will be a golf course, maybe it will be something else. We would be remiss, or at least I would be, in my capacity as a City Council, not to think about tomorrow and 10 years from today, how this city is going to continue to grow. If we don't identify these BLM parcels, if we don't reserve these BLM parcels, at no cost to the taxpayers of the city, as Mr. Perrigo has already pointed out, this is a significant issue. And in these economic times, we need to be cognizant of that. And we have an opportunity here to reserve this site, and at least get it penciled in. Anybody wants to come back and do something else with it, they've still got to go through that entire public process. And I'll read that into my remarks when the time comes, Councilman.
And Councilman Ross also, when you have this designation being changed to civic, it civic includes the parks, right? Includes the golf courses, includes many things that would be, excuse me, many that would be what they are talking they want.
And if I may, Your Honor, respond.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scott behind me, poke me if I get something wrong here, any public uses are deemed civic, am I correct, Mr. Ross?
That's correct.
So that's parks and...
Fire stations, police stations, schools, the works.
Okay, thank you. And I just, as I said, I know that you make every effort to contact out, but I just feel they might feel more secure if that was a condition.
Thank you. Any other council member, before we call for a vote? Yes, Councilman Brown.
And I'll be brief, I'm not concerned about our action today, and I support it, it's a preservation of some land, and any decision, especially if it involves a controversial use, is ahead of us, it's not being decided here. And just what has transpired over the last six to nine months out there, both with city and county residents, my comfort level that that communication network is increasing every day is there. So I don't think there's anything going to be hidden, or tried to be pushed in the back door, very public out there. I have parked beside Mr. Rogie's house after he gave me a lecture a few months back on elevations and engineering and visibility. I think he called me in for stalking, I was looking at the Anne Road viewscape and not your cul-de-sac. And I understand the proximity, but I would just encourage those here today, and some of those out in the RNP area, to remain active, remain engaged, but also do some history out there. I get a little bit frustrated when I hear some comments, and I don't think they're with any kind of malice, but when you say that too many times we've seen this happen before, and this is a special area, well, it is a special area, and it's a special area because if you go back 10, 12, 14 years, this was the growth corridor for the entire city. This is where, with the exception of Summerlin, this is where the entire growth pattern was designated. And but for the fact that the agreements, and the interlocal agreement between the city and the county, the only one in the valley, was created purposely to protect the area from Alexander North to Centennial, from the Beltway down to Durango. It's unique in many ways, but it's because the city and the county have partnered. And it hasn't been perfect, but it's done some things, that it puts some protections in place, and has demonstrated that inside the Beltway will remain a preservation area. Outside the Beltway, we are going to be developing traditional city infrastructure, be it homes or parks or golf courses, whatever the case may be. And that was an agreement that was made 10 or 11 years ago. So along the Beltway, west of the Beltway, and into the Northwest corridor, the city is going to grow. Go back and check some of the decisions that have been public, and some of the decisions that have never got to the city or the county, where we've turned away commercial encroachment, intense development. And those are the things you have to keep remembering, that this interlocal has been in place for five and a half years, and has protected the inside residents, as well as allowing the city to continue what we do on the Northwest. And that sometimes fails to get on the radar screen. The public work projects, you know, the pits, the gravel pits are going to be there, unfortunately, probably 20, 25 more years. They're not going away, we just got through, and some of you are involved in it, a nine-month study. Those pits are there, but ultimately, 25 years from now, this will be a wonderful master planned community west of the Beltway. Won't be rural preservation, it'll be traditional city development, be it Summerlin or Centennial Hills or Aliante, something along those lines. But the only thing that I've heard that we need is a city yard, and some of the other public facilities that are needed just because the city's grown out there. And if you talk about public facilities, they're not all bad. The detention basin that we just converted right down the road from you guys at Lone Mountain, that softball complex, that's a detention basin, and yet it's a beautiful public amenity. The other city maintenance yard is along Buffalo Corridor by the Rainbow Library, across the street from Desert Shores, has not impacted values at all. In fact, a lot of people don't even know it's there, from a design standpoint, from a use, from an hourly standpoint. So my message is simply, stay engaged, but trust, and there is some trust here, trust some of the things that we plan on doing here, and base that trust on what you've seen happen in your neighborhood over the last five or 10 years. Because it's unique, you can't go anywhere else in this valley to find the protections that you have inside the Beltway out here, because of actions by Councilman Ross, this City Council, Commissioner Maxfield. And don't lose sight of that. Stay engaged, stay aware, but have a little bit of trust, because I think there's a foundation in the interlocal that will keep us moving in the right direction. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other council members like to be heard? Mayor Potem?
I would like to say one thing, I would just hope that if the time ever comes, that they decide to go out there and see what they're going to develop on this 131 acres, that they don't look at the bus yard, they don't look at the detention center, that's the jail. Right in my neighborhood, I have a police substation, I have a jail, I have a bus yard, and I get complaints all the time about each and every one of them. I think that it would be too dense if they put something like this in there on 131 acres. The east yard, I'm right by the yard down there on Bonanza, it isn't a problem, they got a nice block wall around it, you don't really get hindered from it, but to put all these amenities and then add Republic Services into it, to me, it would be a tremendous effect on these neighbors, and I would never, ever support that. I think that if and when we ever get to do something like that, that we can certainly work with the neighbors and make something that would be pleasing to them as well as the city. And so, with that, I'm going to support what Councilman Ross decides to do today, but I just hope that we really have input from the neighbors, if they ever go out there to put something in, because I would be approving some of the stuff too, if they're going to put it in my backyard.
All right, any other comments?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just for the record, there was, on this, at the direction of Councilman Ross, we did an expanded notification area, and for this hearing today, we sent out 2,971 notices.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wheeler. Okay, well hopefully next time you will be included in the notification, that's something that, at least if it comes up before this council, we'll make sure of. You didn't get any either, Mr. Rogie? Well, we'll try to rectify that and make sure that it's a very expansive area. They're on the list? Well, something happened, maybe their postman stopped off to get a drink, I don't know.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to tell you, they must be drinking a lot in the city.
A lot of drinking?
These postmen, yes, they're friends of yours or whatever, but I just wanted to say that we have the same problem in our area too, they have not been getting their notification.
Yeah, but we haven't defined what they're drinking yet, Councilwoman.
I'm sure you're serving them the best stuff.
Thank you, you're right, I wouldn't do anything less than that. Let me say this, and I mean this very seriously. I think the worst thing that government could ever say to the constituents is, trust us, because we've had the experience that sometimes we can't be trusted. But I have to say this philosophically, the worst thing in the world is to stew and to have your life ruined for fear of the unknown. Don't do that. I have enough confidence, if not necessarily trust, that you will be notified. I have to, I'm looking you right in the eye and I'm saying that, you can shake your head no, as long as you want, I'm saying you have to have enough confidence you're going to be notified, that you're going to have the opportunity to be heard, the same way you were today, where I didn't tell you enough. You'll be able to express yourself, you'll be able to look us in the eye, and you'll be able to make your feelings known. And then, you have to either accept that we're going to do the right thing under that circumstance, or if we're not, if we're not, then you vote against us. If we are, and you like what we're doing, you vote for us. But we're going to make a decision, at least from my vantage point, knowing my council, which we believe is going to be in the best interest of the community, I think our record reflects that, and that's all I can say. Don't ruin your lives over something that you don't even know when, if, or ever, something's going to happen. It ain't worth it, life's too short. All right, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. For notification purposes, I just handed a individual that received notification in the county, two and a half miles away from this location, so notifications did go out. If you didn't receive one, I don't know what to tell you. And that's significant, because I know where this person lives, and it's quite a ways away from here. I want everyone to be mindful, and I appreciate your comments in regards to this. Mr. Perrigo and I have gone toe-to-toe on this issue several times in regards to, do we need to do this right now? Is this something we really need to do today? And Tom, thank you very much for your help in trying to point this city in the right direction, because that's been your goal, and I would be responsible in my office to think otherwise. These are significant uses, and the gentleman was absolutely correct, these aren't the greatest things in the world, these kinds of uses, but they're uses regardless, that a growing city must deal with one day or another. I'm going to read some statements here, just for the record, so everybody understands this. We've had numerous public meetings in order to get the input from the residents, and we want that to continue. I extended a notification area since there are no residents directly adjacent to this parcel, Councilwoman. I've also worked with Councilman Brown, Commissioner Maxfield, to develop the Anne Road Committee, that consists of both city and county residents from this general area to review any future applications for uses on this site. This location is on the other side of Clark County 215, it's on the west side, adjacent to current and future gravel pit operations. It's on the overhead, and I asked staff to get it on the overhead so everybody could see what we're talking about. The current zoning is not rural, it is PCD, Planned Community Development, which allows high residential densities and commercial uses. It is my responsibility as a City Councilman, to plan for future needs for public services that service all of our families in Las Vegas. This process is to set aside this land for future public uses as needed. Any future site development review will have to come back through the public process, and will be available for the public to provide comments. I've been receiving all of the emails generated from various residents, including the one recently sent out, that talked about wanting the City Council to know that your voices will not go away. That is important to me, because we don't want your voices to go away. It has been through the open process and public meetings that we have been able to hear many concerns and many comments about this location. We look forward to working with the residents as uses move forward on this site and others in the Northwest. I also want to point out for the residents that are here today and spoke about this particular parcel, that Clark County has, is planning the Lone Mountain Park, which is over 300 acres of buffer between the residents adjacent to the 215 and this parcel. Also be mindful that the alignment of the 215 is going to move to the west, it's a significant alignment, realignment change. And that's, everyone needs to be mindful of that, that road that's there today is just temporary, the whole thing's going to move eventually. As I said before, any uses for this parcel that come forward will have to go through the entire public process over again. So with that, Your Honor, I'm going to move to follow Planning and Staff's recommendation for approval of Agenda Item Number 75.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries, and 76, please.
And, Your Honor, I move to follow Planning and Staff's recommendation for approval of Agenda Item Number 76.
Please vote. Motion carries, thank you. All right, Items 77 through 81. 77 is GPA 28388, the applicant owner, Scott Ashtian et al., request to amend a portion of the Centennial Hills Sector Plan of the General Plan from O Office to LIR Light Industrial Research, over 5.62 acres at 4505 and 4515, Balsam Street, 4491 North Rainbow Boulevard, and 2.39 acres, 300 feet south of Red Coach Avenue on Balsam Street. Number 78 is ZON 28389, the applicant owner, Scott Ashtian et al., request for rezoning from RE Resumes Estates and undeveloped O Office, General Plan Designation to CPB Plan Business Park, and M Industrial on 5.62 acres at 4505 and 4515, Balsam Street, 4491 North Rainbow Boulevard, and 2.39 acres, 300 feet south of Red Coach Avenue on Balsam Street. Number 79 is VAR 28392, the applicant owner, Scott Ashtian et al., request for variance to allow a 4.62 acre CB Plan Business Park, District where 20 acres is the minimum site area required, and to allow a 10-foot side setback where 50 feet is required for an M Industrial District located adjacent to Residential District on 5.62 acres at 4505 and 4515, Balsam Street, 4491 North Rainbow Boulevard, and 2.39 acres, 300 feet south of Red Coach Avenue on Balsam Street. Number 80 is VAC 28393, same applicant owner, request to vacate a 60-foot wide portion of Balsam Street located approximately 300 feet south of Red Coach Avenue. 81 is SDR 28390, the applicant owner, Scott Ashtian et al., request for Site Development Plan Review for a proposed 51,250 square foot warehouse center with 18,100 square feet of office, with waivers to allow a 10-foot landscape buffer on the eastern property line where 15 feet is required, and a 0-foot landscape buffer on the western, and portions of the southern property line where 8 feet is required on 5.62 acres at 4505 and 4515, Balsam Street, 4491 North Rainbow Boulevard, and 2.39 acres, 300 feet south of Red Coach Avenue on Balsam Street. The staff recommends denial, and the Planning Commission recommends approval for each of these items, all of which are in Ward 4, they're public hearings which are now declared open. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council, I'm Bob Gronhour, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. I'm here representing the applicant in this matter. Before I get into the applications, if I could get your attention to the overhead here, what I'd like to do at first is orient you to the location of the property. First of all, the general vicinity that we're discussing today, the property's highlighted here in green, but you may know it more specifically where we have Lone Mountain to the north here, we have Rainbow, which is actually to the east side of our property, you have US 95 to the west, and further down south is Craig Road. More importantly, you have the Santa Fe Station Casino on the north side of Lone Mountain, you have some apartment complex by Ovation, the Malaski family, that's already up in existence. You have some apartment complex by Ovation, the Malaski family, that's already up in existence. In this area, not too long ago, I stood before you in this orange area for a multifamily development that was changed, as I mentioned a few months ago. Further to the south of our site in this area are either commercial or non-residential types of uses in this general vicinity. The reason why I'm showing you the general area here is I think it's important so you can see why we're actually coming in for the land use applications that are before you tonight on this piece of property. This area has been in transition over the last several years. It started with some of the developments, as I mentioned, over here with the Malaski apartments, it started with some other single-family and multifamily developments over here. It's a hodgepodge of city-owned property and county-owned property. The area's master plan for mainly for office uses, with the exception of some of the changes that have happened out here with the commercial uses. The site itself is approximately six acres. Our client also either owns or controls this blue area here. And the reason why I think it's important for the purposes of our discussion today to lend support of the area that we own here in green, as you can see, we are trying to obtain as much property as possible. Our client will be coming through with a pre-cemital application in November in this area to come in for industrial uses, for an industrial use application also. This property that he does control also is currently in the county. We're going to be going through the annexation process and essentially come forward with another application for land use entitlements for industrial. So the big plan here is at some point in time is to own all of these properties, not only own, but I mean develop these properties for industrial uses. The front portion that's before you today is for the light industrial. The backside, we already have some existing office use where there's some outside storage. So we came in with some M1 zoning back here. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of the application itself. The vacation application that we asked for, if you may recall, Balsam has been one of these contentious thoroughfares through this neighborhood in this area. When this project in orange was approved, one of the conditions, one of the things that we did in working with the neighbors is make sure there was no access coming from Lone Mountain south on the Balsam. One of the things with the approval of this project here is we would be moving with the vacation approval that's on your agenda today, is moving this cul-de-sac bulb further up north in this area where all the traffic would be coming through out onto Rainbow Boulevard. With respect to the site plan review, there's just one condition that if you're inclined to approve that we would need to make a change to, and I believe that is to condition number one, where we would be providing 10 feet of landscaping along Rainbow, and we would ask that prior to building permits being submitted, that the staff review and approve the intense landscaping on Rainbow. The reason why we're going to be asking for the waiver along the west side here and a little bit of the southwestern portion of our property is we already have some outside storage. A sound wall is going to be constructed, it's going to commence within the next three years, where the screening in that area is going to be anywhere from 16 to 22 feet in height. That being said, we believe that this is a good transition. We don't believe we're going to have any impacts on any residential development here. This is actually another step in the right direction for cleaning up this area.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Gronhour. Are there any questions of Mr. Gronhour at this time? Folks, it's a public hearing, if you'd like to be heard? Yes, sir, if you'd be kind enough to step up and give us your name and address?
All right, we'll do that.
Very good.
Frank Coperoni, 4614 Balsam Street. Seems like I'm here a lot. None of my neighbors have showed up, I think they've given up. My property is located right here on the corner.
Could you do that again, I couldn't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I would be right here.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, what I need is some explanations, and Mr. Gronhour here, what is light industrial? What are his intentions for light industrial?
Okay, this is what you'll do, you'll ask me the question, then I'll...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry about that.
There's no sweat, we're in good shape.
Okay. I watch it on TV constantly.
Get a life.
Hey, this is like the Beverly Hillbillies.
Forget about it, get a life.
I can't get a life.
I'll get in trouble for that, too.
Okay, okay, Mayor.
All right, now, your question was?
What is light industrial? What are his intentions?
Light industrial is, in this, what we're proposing here would be something known as an office flex space. We do have some office, but you do have some of the light industrial uses where they may have some storage inside their buildings itself. It's something similar to what you would see of down in the Tenea Tech Park. You have a lot of office flex development in there. So it's a higher grade of just, it's more than just an office development, but it allows them to have some of their materials on site, and it'd be stored inside or indoors.
Next question, please.
Does this mean heavy equipment?
Does it mean heavy equipment?
Not in the light industrial area. In the M1 zoning would allow for storage, outside storage, so you may be able, you would be able to have any type of storage on the outside.
All right, I'm going to ask Mr. Scott if, in fact, Mr. Scott, you want to elaborate on any of these questions, please feel free to do so.
I'm just trying to look at some of the light industrial uses that our code calls for, somewhere like childcare centers, house of worship church, college seminaries, clinics, special care facilities, convalescing care facilities, catering services, light assembly and fabrication, trade schools, employment agencies, printing and publishing, electric utility substations, mounted and tendered 15 feet or less, radio broadcasting, utility installations, museums, things of that nature.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Have you, are you familiar with the High Tech Park area by the Mountain View Hospital?
No, I'm not.
All right. At the corner of Buffalo and Smoke Ranch, there's a office development called Brook Hollow. It's the same type use that they're requesting today.
As you're well aware, Mr. Brown, there's two offices where they're requesting already there.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
The only thing, I support the projects. My objection is to make these gentlemen follow the codes, and they're not really been doing that.
No, they've been cited.
Yeah, by the county and the city. Because when they get cited by the city, they move into the county. And then the city comes along and they get it annexed into the city, so they move the stuff back in the city, so the county can't get it. That's all. I support any development in this area, except for the next one up, but I don't support, let's put it, the ethics of these people leave a lot to be desired.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, are there any other folks who would like to be heard? I see none, so we'll close the public hearing then. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor, staff. Do you have any comments?
Just one, if I may, Mayor and Councilman. Just for the record, because this project is being developed as office and warehouse, their parking is based upon those different uses. So because 51,000 square feet of this area is for warehouse, they would not be able to re-tenant that with anything other than warehouse, so that the proportion of office to warehouse has to remain in perpetuity unless they were to come back for another site plan.
And with the intent of NDOT putting the 30-foot sound walls up on the back part of the property, does staff have any problems with waiving that part of the landscape and moving it to the front on Rainbow?
That would certainly be acceptable, sir.
And that's the only change?
Yeah, I believe the condition one, that we do the intense landscaping along Rainbow within our 10-foot, that was being proposed.
That's condition one on the...
That would be the site development plan review when we get there.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions before I call Councilman Brown to make a motion? All right, Councilman Brown.
Thank you. On item 77, move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Let's vote, please. Post? 78.
Move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries, 79, please.
Move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries, thank you, 80, please.
Move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Let's vote. Post? Motion carries, and 81, please.
I would move for approval, subject to all staff conditions, with condition number one being revised to reflect the waiver on the eastern portion, or the, I guess, the southeastern portion of the property. And that would be in exchange for heavier landscape on the Rainbow corridor, subject to staff review and administrative approval.
All right, let's vote, shall the votes?
Can I make sure I understand that that would be, we'd be providing the 10-feet-long Rainbow, subject to staff approval, and removing the landscaping in back on the west side of the property? I wanted to make sure.
I said the southeast.
I'm sorry.
Yes. It would be the west and southwest removal, and make sure we put the extra landscaping in 10-foot that we're proposing along Rainbow.
Thank you. It would be that.
The only change, for the record, is southwest instead of southeast.
Right.
Yes.
All right, and that's agreeable, of course.
Yes, yes, sir.
With that amended, condition number one as revised, move for approval.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Items 82 through 88. 82 is GPA 28394. The applicant owner is Kraft Family LP et al., request to amend a portion of the northwest sector of the Centennial Hills Master Plan from O Office to SC Service Commercial on 2.37 acres on the west side of Rainbow Boulevard, approximately 150 feet north of Red Coach Avenue. Number 83 is ZON 28396. Same applicant owner, request for rezoning from U undeveloped O Office, General Plan Designation to C1 Limited Commercial on 2.37 acres on the west side of Rainbow Boulevard, approximately 150 feet north of Red Coach Avenue. 84 is VAR 28400. The applicant owner is Kraft Family LP et al., request for variance to allow five parking spaces where 16 spaces are required for a proposed 74,540 square foot mini storage and boat RV storage facility on 2.37 acres on the west side of Rainbow Boulevard, approximately 150 feet north of Red Coach Avenue. Number 85 is VAR 28651. Same applicant owner, request for variance to allow a 0-foot building setback where 10 feet is required along the north and south property lines, a 10-foot setback where 20 feet is required along the east property line, and a 10-foot setback where residential adjacency standards require 75 feet along the west property line for proposed 74,540 square foot mini storage and boat RV storage facility on 2.37 acres on the west side of Rainbow Boulevard, approximately 150 feet north of Red Coach Avenue. Number 86 is SUP 28398. Same applicant owner, request for special use permit for a proposed boat RV storage facility on the west side of Rainbow Boulevard, approximately 150 feet north of Red Coach Avenue. 87 is SUP 28399. Same applicant owner, request for special use permit for a proposed mini storage facility on the west side of Rainbow Boulevard, approximately 150 feet north of Red Coach Avenue. And number 88 is SDR 28397. Same applicant owner, request for site development plan review for a 74,540 square foot mini storage and boat RV storage facility with waivers to allow a 0-foot landscape buffer on the north and south property lines where 8 feet is required, and a 10-foot landscape buffer on the east property line where 15 feet is required on 2.37 acres on the west side of Rainbow Boulevard, approximately 150 feet north of Red Coach Avenue. Both staff and planning commission recommend denial on these items, all these items are in Ward 4. They're all public hearings, which I now declare open. Are you representing the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Your Honor and members of the council, again, Bob Gronhour, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. Again, I'm representing the same applicant as I was representing on the last set of applications that are before you. I'll be fairly brief with respect to the general location. Again, as I mentioned on the earlier presentation, that this area is in transition. As a matter of fact, the applicant that I'm representing has been in the process of purchasing a lot of these properties out here. And in the process, what we have here on the overhead is about approximately three acres of this application here, which fronts out on the Rainbow Boulevard, which is just north of Red Coach. In this area here with the black dot in this property located right here, we also have control of those two properties. We're in the process of getting this corner piece of property also in the general vicinity. But as we're moving along with development in this area, one of the things that we want to do is we came in requesting for a general plan amendment, zone change, use permits, et cetera, for a prototypical mini storage facility. The mini storage facility is, I'd like to show you here on the overhead. The ingress and egress is going to be coming off of Rainbow Boulevard. We did have a neighborhood meeting as required by code. The perimeter wall itself, in our discussions with the neighbors during the neighborhood meeting, some of the neighbors wanted us to have the walls as high as 20 feet. Our initial proposal, as we came through the process itself, we're providing, we came in with a proposal of 15-foot-high walls along the property boundaries itself. However, it's my understanding, I think there's a condition number 10 in the site development plan review that requires us that we can only go up to 8 feet in height with respect to the walls there. So what I'd like to do for the record is that we may come back in the future for security purposes, if we think it's needed to, to help protect from the potential theft of any damage to RVs and boats in the area, that we may come back in for a higher wall height exception or variance. But for today, I believe, instead of the 15-foot proposal that's before you, as we went through the hearing process, we'll agree to keep it at the 8-foot level. That would be on the perimeter of the property itself, which is on the west, the east, north, and south of the property. With respect to the variance application for the parking, initially, we were asking for five parking spaces where 16 are required. If you've ever leased a space, one of these units in the mini storage facilities, and if you're like me, or probably everybody else who uses them, you'd understand that not necessarily people park in the parking spaces that are designated for them. What they typically do, they drive up right next door or right next to their unit that's on the outside, they park the car right there, they open everything up and move the storage in, put it in the units there. That's, that was the premise behind asking for a variance for five parking spaces where 16 is required. Because we figure, for the most part, although there's no residential use on the property or having an onsite manager living here, we do have parking spaces out here that we believe is sufficient. Mr. Lesman, who's going to be the developer of this, has another site in the county that is similar to this prototype that we have before you. However, if that's to the tune of Councilman Brown and to the council, we can withdraw the variance without prejudice here and provide the parking spaces where you can see interior here. We are providing RV and boat storage parking spaces there. If need be, we could add some parking spaces in those areas, although we don't believe necessarily people will be parking here to unload their stuff right next door to the units itself. But if that is a concern, we can work with you today at the hearing with respect to the parking itself. The landscaping and the variance, before I finish here, typically, we are asking for the northern boundary and southern boundary to remove some of the landscaping, as you can see on the plan itself. And the reason is simply is we're going to be controlling this property here, we're going to be coming in with future development, commercial uses. This will not be developed as residential, we understand that. And then hopefully, this is a corner piece down to the south of our parcel also, which is already planned for office in the county, and we'll be coming in here with a future application also. And we know that this will be commercial, so the landscaping in this area will not be used to buffer any residential. And I believe the only other thing I have is like the last set of applications, what we would ask for is landscaping on Rainbow Boulevard be allowed for 10 feet, but put the intense landscaping in Rainbow Boulevard, subject to the planning, development approval prior to the building permits middles. That being said, I can answer any other questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the gentleman? Folks, public hearing.
I think I'm the only one who lives in this neighborhood anymore. Frank Coperoni, 4614 Balsam. I was in favor of the other project because I think it's a little conducive to the general plan. I don't think this is, mainly because you're just cutting up, it's zoned office or PF, okay? And now you're putting this in the middle of it. And I don't feel that offices are going to want to come in next to a storage shed. There's a storage shed already at the end of Balsam. And this will put two storage sheds within a block area. You just approved a two-story office building, you just approved the business park, and now we're going to put it in a storage shed. I don't think it's the right thing for the area.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Brown.
Staff, are there any concerns as far as the conditions of approval as they're written?
If I may, Mayor and Councilman. With regard to the site development plan review, there was really two conditions that were considered by the Planning Commission. One was with regard to a potential condition to disallow corrugated roofing, so that this project would be compatible with the other offices. And also that while there is a landscaping waiver... And also that while there is a landscaping waiver, that they meet the required number of trees required for the project. And I believe the applicant is in agreeance with those two added conditions.
And as regard to the height of the back wall, in early discussion, we talked about a 15-foot total wall that would block out any of the uses inside, opposed to the eight-foot, that although some of the motorhomes might be showing would still protect people jumping in and out, but also allow more sunlight. Your tendency is to go with the eight-foot wall?
Yes, sir. I believe that with the eight-foot wall and the trees there, allowing the greater light and air, staff's position would be that that would be preferable to a higher wall. At this time, there is no variance for a higher wall. As Mr. Gronauer indicated, the eight-foot wall would be the maximum allowed at this point in time, and they would have to come in with a subsequent application for a higher wall.
All right. So, Mr. Gronauer, all the other conditions you have approved, and you're in agreement with the director's comments?
Yes, yes, I am. Again, for the 10 feet of landscaping on Rainbow, put the trees in there wherever we lost and put them in there. And with the roofing material, that condition in there also, we're fine.
All right, your honor, item number eighty-two, move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries.
Item number eighty-three, move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Please vote. Post? Motion carries.
Item number eighty-four, move for approval, subject to staff conditions. But, Margot, in other similar uses, I understand the justification, most of the people outside are either signing up, very rarely do you see too many cars outside. Inside, if it became an issue, they could certainly convert some of the motorhome spots to designated parking.
Absolutely correct, sir.
So we can leave the condition as is. I'm sorry. Move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Please vote. Post? Motion carries.
Number eighty-five, move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries.
Item number eighty-six, move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Vote. Post? Motion carries.
And number eighty-seven, move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries.
And on item number eighty-eight, Margot, I'm using the online backup. So is the condition written as reflected?
We don't need to add any, we don't need to change any, we need to add the two that I read in, sir.
And on item number eighty-eight, I would move for approval, subject to staff conditions as amended, with the additional two conditions.
I concur.
That the applicant agrees.
Yes.
All right, you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Very good, let's vote. Post? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
You, too. Items eighty-nine through ninety-one. Eighty-nine is GPA two-eight-five-oh-five. The applicant is Central Familia Cristiano Aguilas. The owner is American Wheelchair Veterans and Ernest J. Fresquez, Jr. Request to amend a portion of the southwest sector plan of the general plan from R Rural Density Residential to PF Public Facilities on 11.18 acres at the southeast corner of Madre Mesa Drive and Michael Way. Number ninety is ZON two-eight-five-oh-six. The applicant and the owner are the same. Request for rezoning from U undeveloped R Rural Density Residential, general plan designation, and RD Single Family Residential, restricted to CV Civic on 11.18 acres at the southeast corner of Madre Mesa Drive and Michael Way. And number ninety-one is SDR two-eight-five-one-seven. The same applicant, the same owner, request for site development plan review for proposed two-story, 106,500 square foot church house of worship with accessory, private school, and childcare on 11.18 acres at the southeast corner of Madre Mesa Drive and Michael Way. Both staff and planning recommend approval of all these items. All these items are in Ward Five, and are public hearings, which I now declare open. Are you representing the applicant?
I do. My name is Alberto Howrigue with Nevada Land, thirty-five oh-five East Harmon Street.
Yes, sir.
First, I'd like to start that we concur with all staff recommendations. We're planning to build a church, and it's a church that is currently on a location that is a public facility, I believe is the American Wheelchair Association, which we have no ties with. It's approximately 11 acres, together with another parcel that we assembled together, the two together. We have received a very good response from the neighborhood. We met with them both times, two times. We submitted 25 letters of support to staff. And we had, on one of our meetings, concerns from the neighborhood was traffic. I think they compare us with a school. I like to say the intent of us is to build a church, not a school. The school component and childcare is an amenity. It's about 7% of the facility, and so it's a very small portion of what we are requesting. We are building a modern building. I'd like to, I don't know if you'd like to see any of the...
I'd like to. We have the overhead? Thank you.
The reason why the neighborhood received this well is because they like the landscaping that we provide. We have ample parking. We're planning to have our services on Sundays. There will be one day on Tuesdays, which is normally in the evenings after seven o'clock. So any concerns of traffic, we were trying to mitigate it. Our use is more after everybody else is in the streets. With that, I'd like to request the approval. We receive great response from the neighborhood, from staff, and from public planning commission.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions of the gentleman at this time? Folks, a public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Captain Barlow.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say that the residents that have made contact with my office since you and I met on last week, that their concerns were that you continue to be a good neighbor, and that in the future, should there anything, should anything arise that they are concerned about, that you would keep an open door as it relates to hearing their concerns and addressing them, and working closely with my office as well, as it pertains to whether it be traffic or any future use that comes up. They are very supportive of the development in the project and look forward to this rendering coming to life, if you will. They have stated that they've seen a lot of pretty pictures as it relates to this specific site, and if in fact it does move forward, it is something that I support, the residents support, and we look forward to you being a great partner as it relates to building this beautiful church facility. So with that, Mayor and Council, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
All right, that's on eighty-nine. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Ninety, please.
Yes, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Let's vote. Post? Motion carries at ninety-one, please.
And once again, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation, and as if...
No changes, sir.
Director, Margot, if you have any questions?
No changes.
No changes?
No, sir.
Okay, then I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation, subject to all conditions.
All right, please vote. Post, please.
Thank you, and good luck to you.
Thank you, and respond to you. Coming, Councilman, we can make the pledge, as we would want to be a good neighbor and stay as a neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
Motion carries. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, items ninety-two through ninety-six. These items are in Ward Six. Councilman Ross has been excused. The mayor, Pro Tem, will be handling these items on his behalf. Ninety-two is GPA two-eight-five-one-oh. The applicant owner is Field Development LLC. Request to amend a portion of the Centennial Hall Sector Plan and the General Plan from O Office to SC Service Commercial on 1.04 acres at 3920 Leon Avenue. Ninety-three is ZON two-eight-five-one-one. Same applicant owner requests for rezoning from O Office to C1 Limited Commercial on 1.04 acres of 3920 Leon Avenue. Ninety-four is VAR two-eight-five-one-four. Applicant owner is the same. Request for variance to allow a 10.83-foot yard, rear yard setback where 20 feet is required for proposed commercial building on 1.04 acres of 3920 Leon Avenue. Ninety-five is SUP two-eight-five-one-three. The applicant owner is Field Development LLC. Request for a special use permit for building maintenance, service, and sales of 3920 Leon Avenue. And ninety-six is SDR two-eight-five-one-two. Same applicant owner requests for site development plan review for a 4,500 square foot building, maintenance, service, and sales facility in an existing 6,120 square foot office with waivers to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along portions of the north, south, and west perimeters where eight feet is required on 1.04 acres at 3920 Leon Avenue. The planning commission and staff recommend denial for each of these items. All of these items are in Ward Six. They're public hearings, which I now declare open. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, your honor, councilmen, men and women. Alan Hendrickson, representing the applicant, fifty-seven fifteen West Alexander, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-three-oh. We have brought, put this, posted this picture up here. What we're looking for getting accomplished is constructing additional 4,000, 4,500 square foot building, storage building here. This area has, this already has an existing two-story office building right here. To the north here, to the north of this is two office buildings, which we, Field Development, actually are, one's under construction, one's recently been completed. Everything to the west is all C2. There's an alleyway right here that separates all the C2 on this side from the street, and then the nearest residential would be over here on the far east. To the south, there's an office lot here as well, and then it goes into, goes into C2 after that. What we're requesting was that, on the zone change and the special use permit, that we had some conditions that were needed to be satisfied in order to have that be achieved. We'd met with NARA on two different occasions. On the first occasion, I don't think they got noticed properly, so we followed up and met with them again. NARA has granted a blessing for that, and they've given me a letter, which, I don't know what the protocol is, did I distribute that, do I?
Do you happen to have an extra?
I do, I've brought enough copies for everybody.
Fine, if you'd be kind enough to hand them to the clerk, we'll make one part of the record, and then we'll each take one.
Cool. I'd like to, I'd like to show here, where is it that I can see what's going on? So this is, this is actually the, this block wall right here would be this wall that's showing, right in this particular area, right here, where this landscape is, on the back of this landscape. That's the new block wall that's already under construction and going in. And that's on the, that's on the west side. And then this one's just being, those are the footers that are being poured, and that would be the, that's the block wall right here. Now, if you look at this area over here, this is the south wall. And this south wall runs from here at the front of the property all the way to the back. And it's a six-foot wall. And I think there was some conversation on this wall being eight feet on the north and on the south, and being a new wall, where there's already a pre-existing wall right there, and it would look kind of stupid to have, you know, the wall not matching the height of, if this is an eight-foot wall and this is a six-foot wall, it looks a little stupid, being off-centered like that. So we'd request that that wall stay, stay at six feet to match this existing south Also, there's, sorry, this is the south wall here, which would be this wall here. And then this picture here is the north wall here, already pre-existing. Those walls are six feet. And so what we were requesting is that the new block wall that goes in for the front of the yard and the back of the yard, just match the height of those existing walls, and we don't have to tear that out and build a new wall, it's already there. Like I said, and you can see, NARA was in favor of everything. They sent that letter on our behalf. Have given you the surrounding zoning. I don't know, I would just request that we grant approval on this, and we have the blessing of the homeowners association.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of the gentleman? Folks, a public hearing, if you'd like to be heard? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing, then. This is Ward Six, handled by Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, your honor. On item ninety-two, GPA twenty-eight-five, I make a motion for approval with all conditions.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries.
On the rezoning, I make a motion for approval with staff conditions on item number ninety-three.
Let's vote. Post?
And on item number ninety, on item ninety-four, I make a motion for approval. I think the gentleman explained the reason why he had to have the variance, and I concur with that. So my motion would be to approve with staff, following, with all conditions.
Please vote. Post, please.
And on, on item number ninety-five...
Go ahead, please.
On item number ninety-five, I make a motion for approval with all conditions.
Please vote. Post, please. Motion carries.
And on item number ninety-six, I make a motion for approval. I understand that we have to have some, a new condition, Margot?
Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, yes, please. Just one condition. Number seven needs to be changed to be, to read that a revised site plan should be submitted and approved by the Department of Planning and Development prior to the time application is made for either a building permit or a business license to reflect the elimination of outside storage.
Is that agreeable, sir?
It is. And with that condition...
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
May I just, just a couple of clarifications. One is, Bart, the alleyway, is that a public alleyway?
Yes, sir, it is.
Is it anything to do with flood control or any future facilities that would impact the property lines?
Alley's do provide for surface flow runoff, but generally are not primary carriers.
And then, as the condition reads now to the applicant, the, the two existing walls that were there when the building was purchased...
Correct.
Separate from that, is the condition reflect to leave those walls as is with no improvement as far as split face or redoing it? It's going to stay the same, are you stuck going it? Is that part of the condition?
Yeah, well, the...
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Well, the request was that, that I don't think that when we met originally, that they knew what the physical structure was. They wanted to make sure that, that it was surrounded by a wall.
Simply so the condition as it stands now does not make you tear it down and pull it back up?
I don't believe so. That wasn't my understanding. Yeah, yeah, good.
And then on the back part of the wall, you're asking, the footing's a port for an eight-foot, but you're asking only six feet?
No, the...
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, the, it wasn't, the footing was poured for a six-foot wall, yeah, to match the north-south wall.
The new one, I believe, is being poured for an eight-foot wall.
Oh, it is for an eight?
Yeah. And I just reflect that, because if that alleyway is in fact going to be there, and you're going to have some significant equipment back there, even if it's inside, that eight-foot might come in handy just from a safety perspective.
Yeah, the backside here, there's no problem on the eight-foot, it was just tearing this whole wall down and adding two feet for it, just didn't make sense, yeah.
With that clarification, I appreciate it. I move for approval with, ask conditions change.
Okay, please vote. Post? Motion carries. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, ninety-seven through ninety-nine. Ninety-seven is GPA two-eight-five-two-one. The applicant is Nevada Hand Inc., the owner, city of Las Vegas Housing Authority. Request to amend a portion of the southeast sector plan and the general plan from ML, medium-low density residential to M, medium-density residential on 4.38 acres at 1818 Balzer Avenue. Number ninety-eight is ZON two-eight-five-two-three. The applicant is Nevada Hand Inc., owner, city of Las Vegas Housing Authority. Request for rezoning from RMHP Residential Mobile Manufactured Home Park to R3 Medium Density Residential on 4.38 acres at 1818 Balzer Avenue. Number ninety-nine is SDR two-eight-five-two-four. The applicant is Nevada Hand, the owner, city of Las Vegas Housing Authority. Request for site development plan review for proposed two-story, 111-unit senior citizen apartment buildings on 4.38 acres at 1818 Balzer Avenue. Both staff and planning commission recommend approval on these items, and all items are in Ward Five. They're public hearings, which are now declared open. And I'm going to excuse myself for about two minutes. I have only one question before I leave. Are these as nice as the ones that I like?
Yes.
You're sure?
I'm positive.
Because yesterday, Councilman Reese drove me past the ones that I like, and I really like them.
Yes.
Okay.
Same style of architecture.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Jackie Haas, 295 East Form Springs, Las Vegas, Nevada. And we're here today, and we agree with Planning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Is that it?
Hi, I'm Amparo Gamaso, representing the Housing Authority of the City of Las Vegas.
And you agree with all these two?
Yes.
Good. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to speak on these items? Hearing ended. Councilman Bartle, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam. I want to thank the Las Vegas Housing Authority, as well as Nevada Hand, for doing such a great job with working with the community, as well as my office, as it pertains to this specific location. I'm not sure if I should abstain, or at least disclose, that the location that you're currently going to build the, this beautiful senior housing development is where I started school in Head Start. This is, this was the location of the Economic Opportunity Board Head Start program, where I began and learned how to read. So I'm glad to see that, as I move up in age, that this could be possibly a location in which I can retire and continue to read. Okay, I won't go there. But, you know, the community, really, this specific area of the community has a lot of vacant parcels, and to now come in and build infield and bring more pupils into the area would only service the demand for more commercial and retail, which I'm pushing for. And now with the new grocery store that is coming to the area, I am, you know, that just shows you how much there is a need out there for, number one, seniors. But the grocery store will be needing those seniors as well to shop there, which will now be right inside of their neighborhood. So I'm really pleased that this development is coming on right on time, and it will be a welcome amenity, specifically with the new William Pearson recreational facility, which sits adjacent to this specific site, the new elementary school, the new rebuilt elementary school, Kerman R. Booker, and the two senior centers that are fairly close in, in, from this location, whether it be the Clark County Senior Center or the Doolittle Community Center. So there's a lot of support for this specific use. I'm very excited that it's on, that it's coming online. And with that, if staff has no conditions to add, I would like to move to follow their recommendation for approval of this item.
That's on item 97. You've heard the motion. Cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item number 98.
I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Cast your vote. Post, please. Motion carries. On item, on item number 99, please.
Yes, as far as item number nine is, 99 is concerned, I had a concern as relates to landscape, wanting to make sure that this area softened up its look. And so you all have done just that. I am one that really supports trees and, and, and specific senior developments throughout the area. And so for that, you all have done a very good job as it relates to bringing more trees and greenery. Of course, keeping to the zero scape and, and the water conservation, but bringing as much green as possible to this site is very important to me, to really make it an attractive-looking development. And so, thank you for that. And I would like to also move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to any conditions.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, 100 is WVR 29327. It's going to be a public hearing. The applicant is city of Las Vegas, the owner, City Parkway 5, Inc. Request for a waiver from Section 4B and Section 5B of the city of Las Vegas Street Naming and Address Assignment Regulations as adopted by Title 13.28 to allow the use of the Bridger, Carson and Clark Street names and directional prefixes for non-continuous streets in the Union Park Development located in the northeast intersection of Bonneville Avenue and Grand Central Parkway. This is in Ward Five. Anybody, I can make this presentation. Basically, what's happening here is Union Park, which is our 61-acre parcel on the west side of the railroad tracks, is going to have the same street names that exist on the east side over the railroad tracks, but in order for them to have a continuum, they have to have the E or East designation placed next to the name. So basically, that's what we're being asked to do today. How was that? Right on the button?
Yeah, that was perfect, sir.
Okay.
If I may just add, so that you have it on the record, the total addresses affected are 156. They were all sent notifications as of 4:55 yesterday. We had one response that was positive.
All right, thank you very much. All right, public hearing, folks, if anyone would like to be heard. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then, and I'll turn to Councilman Bartle.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Director Willer's comments as relates to the street name change, and the comments that I have received from those that are on the east side are in support of the item here today. So with that, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Okay.
Subject to any conditions.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 101, excuse me one moment, please. 101 is SDR 28121. Site development plan review for the Nevada Hand, Inc., who is the applicant, the owner, city of Las Vegas. Request for site development plan review for a 144-unit multifamily residential development on 4.86 acres on the south side of Owens Avenue, approximately 850 feet west of Main Street. This has been revised to 150 units, and the planning commission and staff recommend approval. It's a public hearing. It's now declared open, and it's in Ward Five. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jackie Haas, Nevada Hand, 295 East Form Springs, Las Vegas, Nevada. And we agree with staff's recommendation for approval.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? I have one. I've always asked the question, I've never gotten an answer. What does H dot A dot N dot D dot stand for?
Housing and Neighborhood Development.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mullin has never been able to answer that question. It's incredible. Thank you, I appreciate that. Are there any other questions at this time? All right, folks, a public hearing, if you'd like to be heard. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Bartle.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I believe Jackie made, made that up on the fly, but it's okay. Good response, Jackie. Once again, Mayor, you and I both had the privilege of, I believe it's been two months now, Horizon Crest has opened, opened its doors?
Yes, no, actually, nine months since November.
Wow, it's like yesterday.
Nine months? Where have I been?
Right.
Wow. It just seems like yesterday, I tell you. But the building that you all have just opened to the east of this proposed location is a fabulous building, and I look forward to you all building the, I guess, the twin tower, if you will, to the west, and, and bringing it up to really provide housing for a segment of the community that is in need. And so for that, giving them an opportunity to go from not, no housing today to a starter home is a great start, specifically as we turn the new name of this corridor from the homeless corridor to the corridor of hope. And so for that, I would like to congratulate Nevada Hand for really being a community partner and coming in and doing a, a master development that we can all be proud of, specifically on behalf of those residents in our community who are in great need. So with that, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to any conditions.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Close, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
102, 103, and 104. 102 is MOD 28530. The applicant owner is Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of the University of Nevada, Las Vegas. Request for a major modification of the medical district plan from MD, medical support, to MD2, major medical, special aim use designation on 17.49 acres at 1,001 Shadow Lane. 103 is VAC 28532. Same applicant owner, petition to vacate a portion of Hastings Avenue, generally located west of Hastings Avenue and Desert Lane. 104 is SDR 28531. Same applicant owner. Request for site development plan review for proposed 66,200 square foot university education and administration building addition to an existing university campus on 17.49 acres at 1,001 Shadow Lane. Both staff and planning commission recommend approval on these items. All these items are in Ward Five, and they're public hearings, which I now declare open. Are you representing the applicant?
Yes, my name is Thorcig Fusen. I'm with the State Public Works Board.
Is the button one? There you go. One more time, if you would.
Yeah, Thorcig Fusen, with the State Public Works Board.
Thank you.
And we are at 1830 East Sahara Avenue, and we are here to seek your approval of those items. I will tell you that we've met with your planning department and Public Works, and we concur with your conditions.
And what is the project that's contemplated? What's going to go there?
There's a medical, educational facility, research facility, and administrative building.
It's going to be for teaching purposes?
That's right.
For the medical school?
For the medical school.
Has it been funded?
It has been, well, the design has been funded, and we will be seeking funding for the construction.
I see. So right now, the funding is done in place for the actual building of the school?
We'll be seeking that in the 09 CIP budget.
Okay. I just wanted to check it in. Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, folks, a public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Bartle.
Yes, I have a question. Did you bring your site plan?
We do have a site plan, and if you don't mind, I'd like to bring Steve.
Yes, please come forward. And while they come forward, Mayor, I would just like to thank you and your staff for meeting with, with my staff and giving them a tour of the facility. And from, from my briefing, they shared with me that this, as far as from the site development plan, this is going to be a, a great location for UNLV to expand into the downtown community. And so I'm prayerful that you all will receive the CIP funding needed in order to do the complete build-out. So with that, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and walk us through the site plan, if you will.
Okay, let me interrupt for one second, Councilman, please. It's been brought to my attention that there has been a notification of financial interest, that I have a, an interest in a piece of property which is part of the University of Nevada School of Medicine practice plan lease space at 1707 West Charleston Avenue. That's correct. So I think in abundance, of course, and I should abstain from this. Go ahead, Councilman, please.
Okay. Steve Carpenter, 1919 South Jones, I'm the architect for the facility. What I have up on the screen now is a, actually, it's a partial site plan to the south of our parcel. This indicates the footprint right here is Charleston, and then to the west would be Shadow Lane here. This area right here is Building B, which is an existing building. It used to be the Gene Hannah Clark Physical Therapy Facility. The area just, that's landscaped in this area is the existing quad that we're encroaching into a little bit. This will be the, what we're hoping to be the social center of the, the campus there, and really the only open space on campus. Our building will front on that quad, we're calling it, with a plaza, and then we're also creating a landscape plaza between the existing building and then our building, which is sort of an L-shaped building here. Building's four stories, and I have a rendering of that that I'll put up here.
Turn it, turn it the other way.
The other way?
Yep. Perfect.
And this would be looking at the northern side of the building from the existing parking area.
Would you also speak to the traffic flow? Because I understand that there has been neighbors in the adjacent area that were concerned as it relates to traffic coming in and out of this proposed site. So if you go back to the previous rendering and show us in, in relation to, as far as Charleston, and how in fact your students and faculty and visitors will be commuting into the campus.
I also have a larger site plan that shows the, the campus as a whole.
Do you have that?
Just grab that.
You can, you can bring those forward.
So what I have here is a larger scale plan. The building that we were.
Let me just stop you just for a second. Orientate me. Where's Charleston?
Charleston is on the south of the campus, right here. This is Shadow Lane to the west, right here.
And what does the street run directly behind to the north?
To the north, well, Hastings Street is the one that sort of runs through campus now.
Right, but Hastings runs, runs east and west.
Right. So that's to the north of really our building. The, the building, we really don't have a street that runs, I think Bruce's, what street was that?
Bearden.
Bearden, yeah. Bearden's a little bit further to the.
If I may suggest, why don't you put north-north?
Yeah, thank you. We're looking at.
There we go.
Thank you. Okay, great.
There we go.
Thanks.
North on top.
There we go.
Okay, now, now, go ahead, I'm stopping.
Okay. So, again, this is the south. This is Charleston Boulevard, Shadow Lane to the west, Desert Lane, which sort of covers the northern half, which would be on the east side. Bearden is up to the north of our property here, and then Hastings Lane, which has a cul-de-sac circulating through this parking lot, and then exiting out onto Desert Lane here. That's the, the flow. Typically, we're not going to be changing any access on or off the site from what it is now.
So there won't be any entry points off of Charleston?
There is. There's an existing entry point.
Well, that's what I'm asking, just as far as where's your ingress egress, as far as the major traffic?
The major traffic will come in off of Charleston up to the south, right here. There's an existing ingress egress. There's also an ingress egress to the west off Shadow Lane through Hastings and the cul-de-sac up into this existing parking lot that's there now. Also, access for ingress and egress could exit on the east side through Desert Lane in that area.
Okay.
So those are, those are there now, and those will, we intend to leave as-is.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Councilman Bartle, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, for item number 102, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation, subject to any conditions that the planning and development or Public Works may have.
No changes, sir.
Okay, great. That would be my recommendation.
You've heard the motion. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item 103, please.
Okay, for item 103, speak to the vacation, if you will, please.
The area that we're asking to be vacated is Hastings Avenue. We will leave that as access for the parking lot at this stage, but what we're looking to do is consolidate the campus and really create one parcel here by eliminating this thumb, if you will, that points to the west.
Okay, and currently, the street is a city street. Is that correct, Bart?
Currently, it is a dead-end street that dead-ends essentially into a building to the west.
Who owns the property?
The city of Las Vegas owns the property.
Okay. And do you have anything you want to comment or share on the record as it relates to the vacation?
That they will be removing the dead-end stub and replacing it with a knuckle, meeting current city standards.
Okay. And you all are in agreeance to the recommendation from staff? Okay, then I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions set by Public Works and the Planning Department.
Question, this is a public hearing.
Yes, you're right.
Before the motion or after?
You want to talk, you go ahead and talk.
Thank you, sir.
No, we didn't.
As also was the previous item, I believe.
Yes.
One question of the applicant, through the mayor or mayor pro temp. What is the nature of education will take place in this facility?
Can you answer that, please? You would have to.
Perhaps I can field that question. My name is David Frohmer, UNLV, 4505 South Maryland Parkway. The new facility is intended to support the UNLV School of Nursing and the University of Nevada School of Medicine. It's a collaborative venture between the two entities under the Nevada System of Higher Education. The programs in the facility are teaching facilities, classrooms largely, some administrative facilities, and a limited research function. So that is the intended educational program in the facility.
I appreciate that. Are the students or any of the faculty persons affiliated with the SEIU, Service Employees International Union? They're missing your knowledge.
As I understand it, all faculty members are associated with either UNLV or the University of Nevada School of Medicine.
Thank you. Not union affiliated?
I don't believe it.
The reason I ask that question is because I was the union affiliate that had members working at Shadow Lane operations owned and operated by Dr. Desai, which we all know about. Apparently, this is not affiliated with that operation at all.
No, this is a public facility. You may be referring to when this was a private facility prior to Enshi's ownership.
Yes.
It is no longer that ownership.
Okay, very good. I recommend approval of the item. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask, is there anyone wanting to speak on item 102? Seeing no one will, thank you. Okay, on the motion, item 103, cast your votes, please. Please post. Motion carries on item 104.
Yes, and as it relates to item 104, I also, just for the record, would like to disclose that I am a student attending the University of Nevada, Las Vegas. However, just as a disclosure, I am not in any of the specific fields that's coming to this location and with this campus coming to the downtown area, it wouldn't affect me no more than it will affect any other students. So I would just like to make that as a disclaimer and disclosure. So with that, if there's no comments from planning or Public Works, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of item 104, subject to any conditions.
You heard the motion, any question on the motion? Hang on, cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck, gentlemen. All right, 105 and 106. 105 is ZON 28018, a rezoning. The applicant is Blockhouse Development LP, the owner Art Central South LLC. Request for a rezoning from R4 High Density Residential to R5 Apartment to 0.48 acres at the southwest corner of Utah Avenue and Casino Center Boulevard. This is in Ward 3. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. 106 is SDR 28017, site development plan review related to ZON 28018. The applicant is Blockhouse Development LP, the owner Art Central South. Request for a site development plan review for a 55-unit apartment complex with waivers of the downtown Centennial Streetscape and architectural standards on 0.48 acres at the southwest corner of Utah Avenue and Casino Center Boulevard in Ward 3. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions to public hearing, which is now open. Yes, sir.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. My name is Jim Torri. I represent Blockhouse, the developer, at 1600 National Avenue, San Diego, California. And we, of course, would like to get the approval and our agreement with the staff and conditions that have been set thus far.
Thank you. Do you have a rendering of your project?
Yes, sir.
Can we see that, please?
We're calling it Esquire. If you can see that, it's kind of rolled up there.
Can we go to the overhead, please? Okay. Your Honor, I'm going to have to ask to hold this in abeyance for, to our next meeting. I haven't had a chance to meet with this gentleman. I haven't seen this project at all. I do have some questions, but I don't want to embarrass the man right here, so I'd like to hold this in abeyance if I could.
Certainly, Mayor.
Go ahead and meet with him and go over some of the conditions he's got. For two weeks? Yes, till our next meeting.
September 3rd.
September 3rd. All right, before we have a motion on the advance of the public hearing.
A brief comment. I admire the manicure and the watch, look very good on the overhead. But the rest of the blockhouse was hardly detectable, except that it seemed blockish. As a resident of the art district, possibly a block and a half north of this development, maybe two blocks or so, I'm curious, what is the square footage of the units and what is the lease terms or rental terms? Through the mayor pro temp.
Are you able to tell us what the- I don't know.
No, no. It's for you.
Could you tell us what the rental, the square footage of the units are and what the rental price is?
Yes, yes, of course, Your Honor. And Mayor Pro Temp Reese, my apologies, we've met before and I didn't come and present this project to you. We had numerous staff and planning commission discussions about this project, so my apologies and happy to set up a time to meet with you and discuss it more directly. I do have renderings that were submitted as part of the package. They were requested to be revised and we did that. There's just a couple of different renderings of how that site looks and then also the corner.
That looks wonderful. Looks a lot better than what you showed us the first time.
My apologies.
The first time, I thought that I was going to recess the meeting and head to the closest.
Sorry.
Okay.
The-
I'm going to withdraw my motion, Your Honor.
Let me ask one if you don't mind.
You want to go forward?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. Yes, sir.
What is the color of the interior? We know the outside is black, apparently. What are the colors of the interior?
We have inspected the interior spaces, but I can give you a flavor for what the character of-
Mind with some of the art district. Hope something artistic happens here.
The gentleman's going to explain what the interior's going to look like.
Yeah, actually, this project, we have a sister project that's north of this and that is in the arts district. This is not in the arts district technically and we certainly, there is some relationship between these two projects. But in case specifically reference to this project, it's, the concept is workforce housing. It's very economical, very modern, very efficient, not highly amenitized. What we're trying to achieve is an urban worker that actually doesn't want to commute from the, you know, outer areas of Las Vegas. And actually, what we're trying to do is recreate housing that's desirable and accessible to a, not necessarily affordable group, but a lower income group, the workforce, basically the workforce of Las Vegas.
Are you able to answer the prior questions, though, as to the-
Square footage.
Square footage?
Yes, and a couple of the designs and concepts that we're playing with right now, the square footage is ranging from 550 square feet to about, actually, 400 square feet to over 1,095 square feet for two bedrooms.
Do you have a price point for them?
The rental rates that we projected and are performing right now are probably ranging about $600 to $1,200 right now.
How's that with the campaign? How's that?
It's the lower end of the rental.
That seems competitive with at least San Diego and possibly affordable for a good many people in the workforce, assuming there is a workforce. And with the indulgence of the mayor pro temp, I would offer a positive recommendation on this project pending the outcome of serious discussions, in-depth meetings with the mayor pro temp. Award 3, Representative Gregory Reese, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else like to be heard? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mayor pro temp. Yes, I went over the conditions, but I hadn't seen the site development and I haven't seen this renderings here, which is beautiful, I think. And so I'm going to withdraw my motion to hold this in abeyance if I could.
And I'm going to make a motion for approval of the rezoning 28018 with all conditions, following planning commission and staff's recommendations for approval.
Very good, that's on 105. Let's go, please. Motion carries, 106.
Yes, and on the site event review, I'm going to make a motion for approval with all conditions, following the planning commission and staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. Let's go, please. Motion carries. Let me ask you, when do you think it might be in construction?
We're working very hard right now to do the financing, so that's obviously the most challenging part right now.
How does that look?
Good. We, our investors are very eager to get, start building and the biggest portion of this project is raising more equity actually over the debt, so that's our immediate challenge and we've gotten a very good response from the investors that want to move ahead.
Are you working with private investors or-
Yes, sir.
You are private?
Yes, sir.
Have they invested with you before on other projects?
Yes, yes, sir.
In Las Vegas or-
And a big investment in the street with the two sister projects, the Oath House North and then the Esquire Project, yes.
Well, good luck to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Item 107 is SUP 28534, special use permit. The applicant owner is Vitaly Klotchko. Request for a special use permit for an existing 514-square-foot accessory structure, class one with kitchen at 820 Trotter Circle in Ward 1. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Vitaly Klotchko, 20 Trotter Circle. I bought existing building and that building was exist and when I refined, rebuilt the guest house, I find out it was not in the record. So I was trying to put them in the record and I come with this information that I need to go through this procedure.
So in other words, this was an existing structure when you purchased your property and now you're trying to make it legal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any questions of the gentleman? Folks, a public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Councilman. Mario Garcia, 824 Trotter Circle, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89107. I'm here to speak in opposition to the granting of this special use permit. We've lived right next door to the subject property for 16 years. We knew the original owners of that property, the Taylor family. They had it built, custom-built, the home. I think the structure that Vitaly is referring to is, was a storage shed essentially. And at least when I saw it, when the Taylors lived there, they had, it was just a shell building. It was just rough sheet rock, it wasn't even finished out. I think perhaps my neighbor here has undertaken some improvements to that and made it a, more into a guest house, which is certainly not come before our association at all. We do have an association and so I'm kind of surprised that he's coming here and trying to, I guess, make you believe that it was as it is now when he acquired the property. I doubt that's the case.
Certainly the impression that I got from the answer. Did you make any improvements to this?
Yes, I remodeled, I changed the roof, I put the windows, I changed inside, but the building would exist and it's on a picture I would like to show you. There's the, does it show? Yeah. Right here, this is my property. This is Mr., this is next property. There was all of neighborhood property. So this is that existing house, which was remodeling, which is mine right here. There is Mr. Garcia property next to me. Next to him, there is another property right here, which is, has kind of like a guest house, you can see it right here. Next property over here, next property, has a big, huge, two-story guest house. And the property over there through the, close to the exit, has another big building, which is also like a guest house. So what I'm saying, in my association, was three existing with property, except mine, and other three existing property where there are guest houses. And that houses was the way, as I bought, is not a shed, was the same building, except I made renovation. And after I figure out that I want to have reappraisal on my house, I find out it was not on that existing permit. And before that, I asked the previous owner, because they have the sewer system over there, instead of the sewer system go to their main line, so I asked them to put in the record and make it right. And he said it'd been done.
I've been, I was in the shed and I know what it looked like before Mr. Klotchko moved in and made whatever improvements he's made. I know there was no bathroom, there was no plumbing. I think he pulled the permit approximately a year ago, a little over a year ago, to add a bathroom. I only became aware of that recently when I looked through the supporting documentation that was attached to the planning commission item. But as far as these other structures that he's pointing out, we're familiar with those. And in the case of the one next door to me, which would be 828, I believe, Trotter Circle, that was a garage and the previous owners just wanted to convert that into a playroom. They had young children. And that is not a casita, or guest house. And the other one that he pointed to was recently built and that homeowner came to the association, presented us with his plans and indicated what was going to be there. Again, that is not a casita, it has no kitchen, has no bathrooms, that is strictly a game room and a hobby room for them. And the association did approve that, so.
Can I mention, there was over here, right here, two-story apartment building, separate building next to this. And it was built when I was already moving the house. I never heard about this association because I'm part of this. I never heard about this, is anyone present of this, because I already was there when it was built.
Each of those property owners came to the association and asked for permission and presented plans and, you know, their proposal for what they were going to use that for. This structure is a large garage with a workshop. The gentleman that owns that property right now is, was in the window, in woodworking business and he wanted to do some woodworking as a hobby there and so we approved that. But that is not a casita.
There was two-story apartment building with a kitchen and a bathroom and he's put on sale and it's his advertisement. 1,100 square foot to building stories.
Well, I don't know what he's advertising that, Your Honor, but that's not what we approved and if he's changed the use of it, it's certainly not without our knowledge or permission from the association.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard?
I'm going to speak, I'm going to say it. Clearly, the existing property owners long-term have the right to the quiet enjoyment of their properties under ordinary circumstances. But I have one question related to this issue. How, if in fact at all, does the applicant's request adversely impact any of the neighborhood properties? Has it done so already? Is that a potential or what? What are the particulars of that? How do you judge in advance what the impact will be? Notwithstanding the fact of the homeowners association, how do they judge in advance what it will be? Those are the issues. And the gentleman who may have an absolute right to go ahead and improve his property in what and way he sees appropriate within codes, so you have the issue here, is determining factor appears to dwell with the policy and practices of the homeowners administration. It's only a question, not a recommendation, but I would like a public answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Mac McIntyre. I'm from 840 Trotter Circle and also the past president of the homeowners association for seven years. The issue on this one is that we have an architecture committee that this man did not approach. We also have CCNRs that this is a single-family area for single-family residents and not for rental properties or casitas. It's not in our CCNRs and so this is just a violation of our homeowners association, which also answers this gentleman's statement.
All right, thank you. Are there any other folks who'd like to be heard on this? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman?
As I researched this item, I could find no permit anyplace allowing the building of the structure and in fact, Margot, if I'm incorrect in any of this that I've researched, you be sure to intervene. The only indication of an earlier permit request was one for the conversion of a closet into a bathroom, which was made approximately a year ago, August 16th, '07. That's all. Now we have a special use request to approve a fully-built structure with kitchen. Almost entirely the building, except for the conversion of the closet into the bathroom, was built without any city permits. I personally feel uncomfortable representing Ward 1 approving a fully-built structure after the fact, when the laws of the city have not been followed. It would seem in fact to reward illegal actions. In addition, I feel that approving a structure built without permits would open up the city to possible liability if we knowingly acquiesce to this without city permits. As I understand from the neighborhood meeting I attended, residents in the area were never contacted by the applicant, which they've told you here, in spite of the fact the existing CCRs would prohibit the structure. The residents indicated they intended to be more diligent through their own regulations and I would certainly back that up. Every single resident, except the applicant and one other, contacted myself from my office requesting that this item be denied. I move to deny this item and also that the entire structure obtained the required permits. Am I wording that correctly?
Mayor, yes, that's correct. Councilwoman, your motion for denial stands on its own. The follow-up that staff will do is that the applicant will still be required to get permits for the construction- permits for the construction. That has been done. That's building electrical and plumbing and no kitchen would be allowed.
You say he's already gotten the permits?
No, I'm saying he would have to do that. The councilwoman asked me what's the follow-up action from this denial. The denial of this means that we will still follow up, that the applicant will have to get all necessary permits, and that no kitchen would be allowed.
That's my motion.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. All right, 108 is...
Thank you.
You're welcome. 108 is SDR 27284. Site development plan review. It's going to be a public hearing. The applicant owner is Picoli Ranch 9B LLC. Request for site development plan review for the conversion of an existing 404-unit apartment complex to a condominium development on 17.57 acres at the southwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Apple Drive. This is a board two. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. Subject conditions is the public hearing, which is now open. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, I'm Laura Dreia, 520 South Fourth Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, I have read through all of the conditions. They're very reasonable. We accept them. We ask for your approval.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions of the young lady? All right, public hearing, folks?
I'm McGowan, Las Vegas resident. How many of the condominiums projected are contracted so far, or when will they be sold?
Are you in a position where you're able to answer that question?
No.
All right.
Part B of the same question. What will be the adverse impact, if any, of the condominiums upon the very well-publicized situation in South Nevada nationally with regard to mortgage meltdowns? The more condominiums you build and rename perhaps unsold or temporarily sold, tends to contribute to socioeconomic distress of the area. So what are the answers to those relevant questions? Thank you.
Okay, the answer to the second question, since we don't know the answer to the first, is, it's America. Private sector is taking the risk now of making a capital investment and they have to live with the consequences.
Is that the applicant's answer?
That's my answer for the applicant. Anybody else like to be heard? All right, we'll close the public hearing then. All right, Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Director, this is the second time around, is that right? This was first entitled and it was entitled for two years and then it lapsed?
Mayor and Councilman, yes, that's correct. It was entitled January 4th, '06, and that lapsed January 4th, '08.
Is the normal entitlement for two years?
Yes, sir.
Can we do it for less?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd just like to see it converted. If we're going to convert it, let's convert it. Do you have any idea what your client's game plan is?
From my understanding, the engineer, which is Bachmann Turner, is almost complete with their final map.
Okay.
Which once that's filed, that would be converted. The conversion would happen.
Okay. Let's do a one-year. I'd just like to keep a little tighter watch on it, if you will. Maybe put a little bit more pressure to get it done.
Okay.
So my motion is for approval with a one-year period of time. Is that how to word that?
If I may, Mayor and Councilman, that would be a change to condition number two, to state that this approval shall be void one year from the date of final approval unless a building permit has been issued for the principal building on the site.
I think that's the motion the councilman wanted to make.
Yes, sir.
Let's vote, please.
Thank you.
Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you. Okay, 109 is ROC 28418. Review of condition. The applicant owner is PN Roman numeral 2, Inc. Request for a review of condition number 14, that would approve site development plan review, which required the setbacks for this development shall be as minimum of 20 feet to the front of the garage, as measured from back of sidewalk or from back of curb if no sidewalk is provided. Seven feet on the side, 15 feet on the corner, 20 feet in the rear at the southwest corner of Iron Mountain Road and Jones Boulevard in Ward 6. I assume that Mayor Portem will take this as well. The staff recommends approval. It's a public hearing, which is now open.
Benjamin Morris, GC Wallace, 6655 South Cimarron, represent the applicant. We agree with all staff conditions.
All right, thank you.
Can you explain real quick what you're, all you're doing here?
Mainly, it's for the use of a third car garage where it's at an angle. I brought an example of one where the garage, this angled garage, is 15 feet instead of 20. We're still maintaining the distance to the main garage so the cars can park in the garage and off the road.
How many homes are going to be affected with this?
It's 100 and, or 89 homes. But there's only, it'd only be applicable for models like this.
Yes, there's only a handful that's going to be affected by it, though.
The project is still, hasn't been constructed yet, so home sales haven't started.
Oh, it's not going to be affected by it?
All the homes in the community? No.
Okay, that's, I want to get that on the record. Thank you. No other questions?
All right, it's a public hearing.
I'm McGowan, Las Vegas resident. Is the homeowners association representing the affected homes?
No.
Good. And for the record, I would indicate that we have elected a city council. I don't recall ever electing a homeowners association to do anything for anybody. So I'm going to suggest that in future, the city council make the determinations, not the homeowners association. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else like to be heard?
There isn't one.
All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then.
If I may, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Portem, in most cases, a request for a review of condition is to eliminate something or allow for a deviation that is a lesser standard. In this case, it is an additional option rather than a lessening of a previous condition.
Thank you for that clarification.
Very good. Mayor Portem, the motion, please?
Yes. Let me follow, staff and reception, approve this item, please.
Thank you. Let's vote. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 110 is GPA 27006. General Plan Amendment. It's going to be a public hearing. The applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, request to adopt a Public Services and Facilities Element and revise the 2020 master plan applying to all wards. Planning commission staff both recommend approval. It's going to be a public hearing, which is now open.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this item is to create this new element of our 2020 master planning compliance within our R S. We are showing in it plans for sewage drainage and utilities, rights-of-way and facilities, which is required by that state law. It does such things as such ensure that the city's flood control plans are consistent with Clark County's Regional Flood Control District Master Plan, coordinate utility installations within the right-of-way during pavement and utility rehab projects, and coordinate planning and development of water distribution facilities with other organizations. We believe that the general plan element is in compliance with NRS and we seek your positive recommendation.
All right, thank you very much. I think all anybody has to do is take a look at page 32 and they could see the difference that we can make in a city concerning at least the look of Washington Avenue, whether it's a good day or a bad day.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Remarkable. All right, public hearing. Yes, sir.
I'm McGowan, Las Vegas resident. What portions of the plan address issues such as the existence of debris in flood channel 1, landfills, or sewers, and/or the presence of human beings, homeless or otherwise, in any of those locations, whether it's city and for public city? Is that in the plan element?
I think inferentially, everything that's in here is to protect against harm coming to public persons. As far as debris, I don't see any specific reference. I don't recall any specific.
Mayor, no, that would be a maintenance issue.
Clarissa, I mentioned that because you might go back to, back in time to the time when Caesar's Palace, the fountains overflowed into the second living room called the Imperial Palace, and out the back door to Alan Winick, over car height, because one drain at the end of the street was blocked. So one drain could cause havoc. Thank you very much.
That would not happen in the city, only in the county. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, I want to say thank you very much for the way you arranged. I don't know whether all the books were arranged the way mine was, but you really made it very easy for us to navigate through a fairly complex agenda. Thank you. All right, I ask you to please set the public hearing dates and appeals.
If I, can we have a vote?
We didn't vote?
No.
Uh-oh, we need a motion.
Please.
Let's follow, staff and reception, for approval.
Let's vote. Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I thank you again, and I would please ask you to set the public hearing dates and appeals for the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter of evidence. Thank you. Now comes time for citizens' participation, which is agenda item number 112. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come up, give us your name, and we'll put the three-minute timer on. Yes, ma'am.
Dorothy Barnes, Las Vegas resident since August of 1999. As you all well know, I've been wrestling with a problem with them holding my name on the program. And as I've said in previous meetings, I made you know that when they started those programs, I was one of the people who were just not supposed to be left behind. And I am concerned about the health, education, and welfare and public safety, because these programs do impose health hazard as well as a safety hazard. These people that are telling lies have made me know, we telling lies on people like her because we don't want her to get over us and charge of us. Okay, that's not necessary. I've tried to calm their little minds and make them know, I don't care to be over them. I don't want all the lies told on me because it's brought health condition, bad, poor health. It's brought unsafe living condition on me. My life has been threatened because of some of the lies, the way they told them. When they're put on these programs and taught to lie, they need to know when to lie, who to lie on, and how to lie. Don't just turn them aloof, because then it's mental health time to come in with injection because they're doing something crazy. And I want them to remove my name. I'm still pressing for them to remove my name. If I can't get on Ellis Air Force Base to cancel my own name off such a program, I don't care to support lies or the liars. I'm holding liability, liability type thing on them because the lies are imposed and health hazards and as well unsafe living conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Mayor Goodman, how are you doing?
Very good. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Dennis Tony. I live here in Las Vegas. Let me say a couple of good things first. Mayor Goodman, this is a privilege for me to come to speak to you. To say the least, I'm proud of the job you are doing for Las Vegas. You remind me of another mayor I had in my lifetime, Mayor Koch of New York City. A lot of similarities. I think the main reason is it's about trust. And I remember you just said that earlier today. That then means a lot of trust. I'm not a debater, so if my voice cracks...
No problem.
Okay? I trust you. I trust you, and when you speak, I understand what you are saying because it makes sense. Now to my speech. And since we don't have a full house, I hope you give me a little bit extra time. I'm one of the few people who loves to watch your meetings on Channel 2. I'll sit in front of the TV for three or four hours watching the replays of the city council meetings. My family will come into living room and say, Dad, what are you watching TV? What are you watching on TV? And I say, the city council meeting. They say, why are you doing that? They think I'm crazy.
To be honest with you, sir, I tend to agree with them.
Well, I'm going to give you a reason why now. I think the reason is because I'm interested that you're able to see how it's done, how Las Vegas is being built, and what guys do, and what you guys say. Okay, that's my reason. Mayor, now my speech starts, and you are not going to like some of the things I say.
It's okay, it's America.
Okay, I'm retired Army, 22 years. I moved to Las Vegas in March of 1993. To give you an idea how long ago that was, you could still drive down the length of Fremont Street. The Pioneer Club was still open, and the marquee sign, Las Vegas Nick, if anybody remembers that, was still working. I remember his arm used to go up and down.
Las Vegas, Las Vegas.
And there was a recording that said, welcome to Las, howdy partner.
Howdy partner.
Welcome to Las Vegas. Now, nobody, now, nobody's perfect. When somebody says something to me that I don't like, I take it as constructive criticism. Okay, I have an article from the Review Journal. This article is dated April the 20th of this year. I'm just, I'm not going to read the whole thing, just points to major concerns. The heading is Code Proposals, City Disposes. Council Agrees to Most Requests Made by Developers Review Files. Whatever we each, the developers hope to evolve by naming their plan Providence Square. I wish Councilman Ross was here. I mean, he must be the luckiest guy in the world not to be here. I don't know why he left. This Providence Square, if you all remember, was in his ward. And this was before April the 20th, when it was before the council meeting. Northwest Valley residents find little providence about a project that too many has become synonymous with bad growth. Last week, Las Vegas City Council approved Focus Property Group's 200,000-square-foot commercial project on 26 acres, next to homes of owners who, based on city planning codes, always believed nothing but more large-lot homes would ever be built there. All right, that was in the plan. They thought more homes is going to be built there. To Lisa Mayo Triso, I don't know if I'm pronouncing her last name. I know you guys all know her. I love this lady. I love this lady. I always saw her one time. Who led Northwest Valley's red citizens furiously opposition to the development.
You know, I really, what is the point you're trying to make? Please.
Okay, let me read just one paragraph, then it'll say the whole thing.
I'll tell you why. One early, I would give you the time, but there's a Nevada League of Cities meeting that's taking place in Fallon.
I understand.
And at least two of the councilmen have to leave, and then we're going to lose a forum.
I understand. Of 305 such items to come before the council last year, the council agreed with staff and denied an alteration less than one in 10 times. In other words, to come before you to deny the plan and less than one in 10 times it was approved, the plan was approved. The percentage breakdown like this, 77% of items were approved over staff's objection. 6.5% were denied in agreement with the staff. Let me, let me, I'll make this one statement and then I'll close it off. Last council meeting, there was somebody in Councilman Ross's ward, I don't know if he was a businessman or if he was a resident that wanted to do something, and he was requesting action. What he did was, if you remember, Ross said, I, he just told the guy, I throw up my hands. I can't help you. You're going to have to start from square one. Do you remember what I was, remember last?
Yes.
I said, what is that? I mean, it upset me so much.
Don't be upset.
That this guy said that, that I wanted to, you know, I wanted to hit the TV. They're here to help the residents. That wasn't helping this guy. I mean, he went the whole procedure, and Ross raises his hands and says, I can't do anything about it. You got to go back to square one. You know, I don't think that's right to do that.
Sir, if I could just comment.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ross is probably one of the best working with the neighbors. This represented Ward 6 ever since we created Ward 6. This applicant you're talking about, Councilman Ross has had problems with him for at least three years where he tried to work with him. And the guy says, okay, 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 okay. And he doesn't do it. So then we have to go out there, we have to sign him because he's not, he's not living up to all the codes and stuff. So then we work out, we, Councilman Ross works with him, on and on and on, and the guy says, okay. He doesn't do it. And so Councilman Ross has been working with him, I know, for at least three years.
And so Councilman Ross has been working with him, I know, for at least three years, trying to bring him into, into code to where he's doing what he's supposed to be doing, and he still hasn't done it.
Okay, I understand.
I see. Councilman Ross has bent over backwards to help this guy.
Yeah, but if there was a problem, you would think that somebody would help him. Okay, you got to do this, or you got to do, along the way. Don't just.
He's done it for three years. This was just the culmination. This was not the first time. This guy, this guy's been before us.
Okay.
He's been before us before.
What you may want to do is, we welcome you to our meetings. We welcome your, your input. Next meeting, Councilman Ross will probably be here at this time. He's been excused. He had a professional meeting that he had to go to, so maybe he'll come back and ask him, or call him on the phone. We're all accessible. Call him on the phone and say, Councilman, I didn't really appreciate the way you treated that constituent, and then he'll tell you why he did what he did, and you'll either accept his explanation, or you'll say, you know, I don't agree with you.
Okay, one last thing, is, there was a lot of stuff I wanted to bring up, but I live over by Las Vegas High School, over by Hollywood. Desert Inn comes up.
That's a county.
And doesn't go all the way through. There's like a wash.
Yes.
So it stops, then it starts on the other side again.
That's not in the city. That's the county.
Yeah, but I just, I have a question related to that.
Okay.
It's a misconception that people think that taxpayers' money pays for roads and bridges and stuff when they're built. That's a misconception. The contractors, when they build housing projects, have to put so much money into an account to build this stuff before they even start construction. Okay? So where I live, I mean, there's, in two years, you couldn't imagine how much development has occurred over there, but they can't, there's one way in and out.
Okay, I'm going to have to cut you short.
Okay.
Because I'm losing my counsel.
All right, I think you, the main, the main thing I want to get across is I don't think it's right about the amount of denials that you guys approve from staff.
I got to cut you. And again.
I'm losing my entire counsel.
I appreciate you standing, sir. Thank you very much.
Just really quick.
Yes?
Staff has to recommend denial on a variance for parking. If there's, if staff requires 12 parking spaces, and they can only come up with 11, they have to deny it. And we have to go out and look at it and see if 11 spaces will be okay, so we, we give them the approval of the variance. And that's why we go against the denial. But anything that doesn't go along with code, staff has to recommend denial on it.
Okay. I appreciate your time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'll be very fast. My name's Chris Lebzak. I'm a new resident to Las Vegas, and I just have some concerns about the police department. I believe you have a little bit oversight in.
Very little.
But I was given a ticket for going through a red light when it was actually yellow, and this might be an individual mistake by one police officer, or it might be a larger problem. Because a little while after I received that ticket, I got this, and I know you're not, you can look at that. This is from the state of Nevada, saying that they don't have record of my, of my insurance, and I've had insurance continually. And I called my insurance company, and they said that they did make a record of that, and they sent it to the, to the state. But, and, and my insurance agent said that, that you want me to be honest with you? It's about the economy. And I know the economy's bad, but if you're doing a Vegas scam to get, to get money from people.
Let's put it this way, okay? The two areas you're talking about, we have no jurisdiction over.
You do have some jurisdiction over, over the police officer.
No, we do not.
I believe you can fire the chief, police chief, can't you?
Well, absolutely not. He's independently elected. That may be a misunderstanding by the public generally, but we're a very unusual community in the sense that the police department is consolidated. The sheriff, who is the head of the police department, is elected by the entire electorate in the county of Clark. The only jurisdiction that we have is to provide a portion of his budget based on the number of phone calls to which he responds to within our city limits. Other than that, he's independent of us, and if you have a problem, he's the kind of guy who will talk to you about it. He won't, he won't run away from you. He'll, he'll address the problem. Secondly, the Department of Motor Vehicles, we have no jurisdiction over them whatsoever. The only linkage between them and us is that they have some offices within the city, but that's a state agency. So it's not a Vegas scam.
Well, it was flagged some way to send me this, and I've had insurance.
I'll tell you.
So it might have been the, that I would pull over and given that ticket.
It wasn't us, my friend. It wasn't us. No Vegas scam.
All right, well, well, I'm innocent, and sometimes.
And I'm innocent.
Okay, that's, well, maybe the police officer isn't.
Okay, that could be, but I don't have any jurisdiction over. Las Vegas is innocent on this one.
Well, that's, that's what you can say, but I'll tell you, from now on, I will never register my vehicle in Nevada again, and I will never have insurance here again, because the insurance is three times as high.
You're not punishing me, buddy.
Huh?
You're not punishing me.
Well, I'm punishing the city and the state.
Not city of Las Vegas. We don't get any of that. That's all state.
Oh, you don't get any income from, from, from an insurance company?
No, we don't.
You don't? No city tax?
Not from the insurance company. That's something we may want to change based on.
Okay, but you do get money from issuing tickets.
Yes, but that was, that issued by us. We don't, we don't get money on that ticket.
It was issued by the city of Las Vegas, though, wasn't it?
No, it wasn't.
No?
No. Where did you get your ticket?
Downtown Las Vegas.
And who gave it to you? Sheriff?
I'm, I'm actually not sure.
Well, it wasn't given to you by a marshal, because they don't have jurisdiction to do it, and they're our only police force, of the city of Las Vegas.
Okay, well, so then, so there's no city police officers?
No, there are none.
They're all employed by the state?
No, they're all employed by the Clark County Sheriff.
Okay, so the county, okay. All right, well, Las Vegas is inside the county, correct?
We are an incorporated area within the county. You can't make it, buddy.
Well, I don't, I'm trying to understand.
You're not going to make it. Levy's going to turn you over to Mr. McGowan when we're through. He'll explain everything to you.
Yeah, leave me outside.
He has nothing better to do. He's got a lot of time.
All right, well, in the.
My other friend over there will turn off his TV for an hour or two, and he'll talk to you about it.
In the limited jurisdiction you said that you do have over the police, just remind them not to.
His budget.
Huh?
His budget.
Okay, well, just, maybe you're giving them too much, and there's too many out there.
That's your fault.
Too many cops and too many, too much corruption. So just keep a rain on them.
Thank you. Okay, next, please.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. In all due deference and respect to the previous speakers, actually two previous, in God we trust, all others pay cash. I seem to recall that from way back in time. That's a good thing to keep in mind. May I have the overhead, please?
I know, but that's why it's still unfair.
On the overhead, you see the neon to the side of the 601 building. The prominent feature is an array of Bombay Sapphire gin martinis teeming as they go up, the bubbles rising and exploding at the top. A rather spectacular display, which will increase the excitement and vitality of downtown Fremont East. And a very good reason for that, as a matter of fact, the other venues in this key development proposal. There's about 12 food, beverage, entertainment venues in Ward 5. There's a base incident map. There will also be Club Freedom USA, can be revived and put to good work. All of this can open on New Year's Eve of 2008, and a 10-day celebration will have worldwide publicity. It will be the keystone of the start of genuine, serious development in Fremont East throughout the entire district. And much more here to see, but I won't belabor you with it now. I would just say one thing to you, looking at 5,000 jobs, full-time permanent jobs, you're looking at socioeconomic advances that are badly needed. I mean, I remind you that currently, we are celebrating the highest employment rate, unemployment rate in 16 years, something unheard of in this city. And the way out of it is not contraction, but expansion, meaning effective and efficient increased productivity and quality that can be done right here at reduced cost.[1722.31]